Okay, welcome to the third public hearing for the long-term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. Before I commence, I would like to acknowledge the Yiddish people who are the traditional custodians of this land. I would like to pay respects to the elders, past, present, emerging of the Euro nation, extend that respect to other Aboriginals present. Today we'll be hearing from a number of government agencies, including the Department of Prime Industries, Regional New South Wales, Forest Corps, the New South Wales Environment Protection Authority and the Natural Resources Commission. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. A transcript of the hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018, and there may be some questions that a witness could only answer if they had more time or certain documents to hand, and in these circumstances, witnesses are advised they can take a question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone, and for committee members participating via WebEx today, can I please ask you to state your name before speaking and clearly identify who questions are directed to, and also ask that you mute your microphones when not speaking, and if you do start speaking while muted, please state your question again so it can be recorded in the transcript. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? So I now welcome our first witnesses from Department of Prime Industries, Regional New South Wales and local land services. So could each witness, starting from my left with you, Mr. Dr. Brad Law, can you state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Yes, my name is Brad Law, Principal Research Scientist at the Forest Science Unit, New South Wales DPI. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr. Millam?
Yeah, my name is Nick Milham. I am the Group Director of Forestry Policy Research and Development in the Department of Prime Industries. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
And Mr. Witherton?
Yeah, David Witherton, Chief Executive Officer, Local Land Services. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr. Tindall?
Dr. Adam Tindall, I swear that the Director of Policy and Reform, Local Land Services. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Now, would anyone like to make a short opening statement? Mr. Dr. Brad Law, thanks.
Yep, thank you. So I thought I would start by saying my background is that I have 35 years of experience working as a scientist on wildlife ecology, and I've published over 150 peer-reviewed scientific papers. The forest ecology science team that I'm part of has been researching wildlife in New South Wales forests since the 1970s. Understanding the ecology of forest wildlife has been our primary focus, and this has involved designing experiments to look at the response of species to timber harvesting, fire and other forest disturbances. Improving our understanding of threatened species to better protect them has been and is a priority. Many of these studies are long-term because that's the nature of assessing forest cycles. Because of the huge number of species that occur in New South Wales forests, our understanding of biodiversity remains incomplete. Any consideration of ecological sustainability should consider this, even though we have made substantial progress in understanding how different species respond to timber harvesting and other disturbances. The current development by the Natural Resources Commission and partner agencies of a long-term, cross-tenure forest monitoring programme will over time address gaps in our understanding of changes in the status of species. There are however, some species that we already know a lot about. For example, in 2015, we began region-wide monitoring of koalas and other species in hinterland forests of North East New South Wales. This has continued annually since then, including through the fire summer of 2019, 2020. Overall, our research points towards the ability of mitigation measures as well as time and space constraints deployed under forestry regulations to reduce the impact of forest disturbances. Forest literature around the world suggests that retention forestry has the greatest role to play in mitigating impacts. Retention forestry means retaining unharvested areas throughout the landscape at different scales, from individual habitat trees to clumps for wildlife to excluding harvest from old growth, rainforest and riparian areas along creeks. This approach is adopted in regulatory practice in New South Wales within the coastal IFFA, being the most recent example. In state forests of New South Wales, these harvest exclusions amount on average to 40 to 50% of the landscape, and this maintains a mosaic of forest ages, refuges and connectivity across the landscape that aids persistence and recolonisation after disturbance. Research funded through the New South Wales Koala Strategy demonstrates the effectiveness of this landscape approach in sustaining koala habitat and populations, even in newly harvested areas. Our research found no difference between koala presence and density in harvested state forests and control sites in national parks. GPS tracking of individual koalas in forestry landscapes further supports that conclusion. On the other hand, we measured that high severity fire had a very large impact on koala density. So these results don't mean there's no room for improvement. Adaptive management and monitoring should be a fundamental part of any sustainable practice and in fact, already integral to the forest management framework in New South Wales. My research and the work of my colleagues is designed to ensure that that framework is well-informed and adapts on the basis of robust science. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you be happy just to table that's just our hand side gets 100% correct?
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. So we've resolved just to have some free-flow questions today, so I'm looking for takers.
I might just open up, if I could, Chair. A pretty open question to each of the panel members here. I take it you've had a chance to now read the transcripts from the previous hearings. Number of matters have been raised which we're going to explore, but if you could, maybe if there were really pertinent matters that you, when you leave here today, you don't want to left unanswered, here's your chance to respond to those matters that might be in the transcripts that need answering. I'll open up, I'll start somewhere. Mr. Witherton?
Yeah, look, certainly been briefed on them, Mr. Veatch, I won't say sort of across it in exhaustive detail. I think, you know, in terms of local land services, as you're well aware, our roles in administering the approvals for a private native forestry, something that only came across from the EPA to us sort of late in April 2018, so sort of about three and a half years into that journey. I think as people are well aware, going through, you know, we almost at the back end of that process in terms of developing new codes, new codes that are really fit for purpose. And, you know, there's, I think, private native forestry is a real opportunity for sustainability, you know, a sustainable resource that can deliver robust outcomes there for a whole range of stakeholders. And I think, you know, we've certainly covered off in previous estimate sessions, you know, yeah, it's not without its challenges there at the moment, but I think, you know, we've got a real opportunity to address those going forward.
Yep. Mr. Millam, is there anything in the transcripts from the previous two hearings that you think you don't want to leave here today having not answered?
Yeah, there were, excuse me, I think two issues that came up that I'd simply like to comment on briefly. One is there was, there was some conversation around whether or not the demand for, differing types of demand for timber and forest products might lead to increased harvesting of, particularly within our native forest context. And I think that that can simply be put to, put to rest, that concern, because the, it's not actually the end use of forest or forest products that determines how much can be removed from the forest. That's actually determined by long-term ecologically sustainable yield modelling constrained by our regional forest agreement commitments. And in fact, it doesn't matter what the demand is for the product, you simply can't remove more biomass from the forests under our regulatory regime. So that was one of them. The other one is there seemed to be a fair difference of opinion being expressed to the committee by differing witnesses about carbon cycling in our native forests. And what I can say is that we have the privilege in New South Wales of actually employing some of the best carbon cycling in forests and climate change scientists in the world. We're in the position where other countries and international organisations come to us for advice on the basis of the status of our scientific expertise. And their research, which I'm happy to put in front of, I can provide copies of papers to the committee, and also the global weight of science accepted by organisations like the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the International Energy Authority, the FAO under the United Nations, the Food and Agriculture Organisation, is that the use of, that the use of forest biomass and managing our native forests in that way is actually not only renewable and sustainable, it has superior carbon outcomes to not managing our forests in that way, and is looked to be part of the solution to a low-carbon future globally.
Okay. I've just got one more question before I go to Mr. Field, but I'll come back to with more questions. But a lot of the testimony we heard previously indicated that there needed to be a change in silver culture practice in New South Wales. You know, I know there's a lot of components to silver culture practice, like silver culture is a pretty big area. Do you accept the evidence that we heard around the need to change silver culture practice in the management of our forests in New South Wales? And if so, what are the elements that you think we really do need to focus on?
My apologies, I'm not a forester, I'm not trained in forest science, so I can't provide an answer to that question, and Dr. Law can speak for himself, but he is also not a forester.
Yep. Does the research, I remember Dr. Law, that we had some, Professor Gibbons and Lyndon Meyer were here, they were talking about silver culture practice and research that they've been undertaking in that area. Can I, and I see that you're, I think you are Principal Research Scientist with DPI, pretty exciting role I dare say, broader than just this. What sort of research is DPI involved in this area?
In terms of silver culture research, a lot of that research has probably been done in the past, and there's, I don't know, there's particularly active role at the moment. But the, we have one silver cultural scientist who is experienced in that area, and as he said, silver culture differs very much from region to region, and New South Wales silver culture is very different to Victoria and Tasmania.
Yep. So the primary focus, sorry. So do we invest much in research as the taxpayers of New South Wales in silver culture?
I might take that question, Brad, in relation to the Department of Prime Industries, I can't speak for any of the other agencies in this space. Excuse me. The Forest Science Group is an actual factor, more than half of my, of my team. We have over 20 FTE invested in forest science within the Department of Prime Industries, and the, the primary focus of our research is in, is in areas such as forest health and biosecurity, in, in carbon cycling within forests, obviously a key issue of public policy and in relation to the management of forests, and also in forest ecology, and the purpose of that research is to assist in informing our regulatory settings primarily, and to ensure that those settings are effective, or if not, whether they need to be adapted.
So with regards to forest health and biodiversity, how much do you spend on research into weed eradication?
We do, my, my team is not, does not work in the weed space. The, our forest health and biosecurity focus is on, is primarily on pest and diseases of trees.
Do we do any research on impact of weeds on, for instance, fire load, fuel load?
Not within my team.
No. Dr. Law, are you, you're not aware?
No, we don't, no, I'm a fauna ecologist, so specialise on animals, but we don't have an active programme on weeds, that's correct.
Righto. I'll leave it there for the time being. Justin, who's got reams and reams of online paper.
Sure. For whichever, and thank you for your attendance here today, gentlemen. I know there's a lot going on in this, in this sector at the moment. Obviously you would have noticed that the NRC, I ignored you tonight, thank you. The NRC's report into coastal IFFA operations post the wildfires was leaked to the media last week. It's difficult not to consider some of the implications in that report, given this inquiry is about the future sustainability of the timber industry. It points to a pretty dramatic fall in sustainable timber supply in our native forests, particularly on the south coast, but even on the north coast, there's about a 30% reduction in large high-quality sawlogs that are likely to be available in our forests over the next 30, 40, 50 years. Can I just get a comment? It seems from here that there's no way that this industry is doing anything but contracting into the future, the native, the native timber industry. Would that be correct?
So the, the long-term ecologically sustainable yield review that was undertaken post the 1920 bushfires has indicated that there will be reductions, there will need to be reductions in, in future wood supply commitments out of our public native forests.
Yep. Now, and that's a bit contested, because that was largely, it was largely a draft report based on desktop studies, and it acknowledges in the report itself that more work's going to be needed, more on-the-ground work over time. The NRC report seems to suggest that, you know, that's accurate to some degree, but there might be some differences, and obviously it depends on the use as well. But Mr. Witherton, and this goes to the point that you and I have been sparring over for a little while now, and Mr. Millam might be for you as well, is the expectation that private native forestry will pick up the slack here, and that you will maintain a similar level of net timber supply to processes and millers into the future?
Yeah, look, I'll certainly speak from an LLS perspective and, you know, may invite Dr. Tindall in, but certainly I don't think it's true to characterise that as there's an expectation for PNF to make up that slack at all. In terms of, you know, what we've seen, in terms of the number of plans we've approved over, you know, the last three years, I think on average it's about 288 plans a year, the long-term average is closer to 300, so we haven't really seen an uplift in terms of engagement there. You know, certainly discussed previously the, the lack of quality information around what, what's happening in terms of the current yield from that, and I think that is a real weakness of the codes currently, and that's something we're absolutely intent on addressing as part of the new codes in terms of...
For those members who haven't been listening to us over the last few cycles of estimates, just to be clear, you and the broader government, whether it's the EPA or LLS or Regional New South Wales, you have no idea how much timber is coming out of the private native forestry sector each year, right?
Look, I think there is certainly metrics we can draw from, well, there's two sources there in terms of the ABERS data, but that's only three-yearly data, so, you know, and the most recent we've got is 2018, so we're due to get some new data there. And then there's the SLAT starter, so, you know, from the aerial work that EES do. But in terms of annual reports from individual landholders?
Would you put a figure on it? Would you give me a cubic metreage or a hectare?
Not with any degree of accuracy whatsoever. So certainly in terms of the new codes, the intention there is for landholders to submit both pre and post-harvest reports, so, you know, in terms of forecast of what they intend to do, and then what they've actually done. So that, that will, I think, you know, create, you know, a good baseline of evidence there in terms of what the yield is there, you know, in, well, now, you know, rather than sort of looking back in terms of what's happened, but I think, I'm certainly not aware of any work we've been engaged with in terms of looking at the aggregate yield from both private native forestry and the state forests, sort of hardwood network and the balancing around that. So, you know, the, the work we've done is certainly been absolutely independent of that, but happy to invite Dr. Tindall if you can add any more to that.
Yeah, I think just to add to that, it is an area that we have identified as, as an area for improvement. The 30-day pre-harvest survey and the 30-day post-harvest survey will give us a better level of data on, on the private estate, so landholders will give us an approximate estimate of the cubic metres that are taken off when they're doing harvesting, and also the area that's being harvested.
But the total estate at the moment is pretty substantial. Can you put a figure on the, on the total area under private native forestry approvals?
Yeah, yep.
It's approximately 640,000 hectares.
So it's almost 70% of the total public estate, net harvestable area, right? So it's, it's coming, it's coming up to a similar size to the public estate, so it's substantial. Your submission, or the government's submission to this inquiry tries to emphasise just 1% of the public estate is harvested each year. Would you think it'd be similar in the private estate?
I think the best figures we've got there from the SLAT starter, and I think that that's in the order of about 1,900 hectares per annum, sort of based on a 10-year average.
That's important, I think, to make the distinction between what's been approved and what's actually harvested every year. So the SLAT starter is an indication, and with that pre-harvest and post-harvest notification, we'll get a more granular understanding of what's happening.
I guess where I'm getting to is, you make the point in the public estate that it's just 1% harvested per year, that's one of the sustainability claims. I mean, obviously it takes 40-odd years for them to regenerate a full sort of diversity, I guess, so it's a, it's a large amount of estate that's impacted at any one time. But I guess my point is, you can't control, once a PNF approval is granted, you can't control who logs when or where, so you could actually see quite intense impacts in any particular year in the private estate, couldn't you?
Yeah, there's certainly potential for that. Don't believe we are seeing that, you know, certainly the SLAT starters not indicating that, the wood supply challenges there for mills aren't indicating that, but absolutely.
I guess, and try and close the circle here, given the analysis suggests the public estate is going to be under substantial pressure for the next, for the foreseeable future post-fires, I'm raising this issue because I'm concerned we will see that focus on the private estate, and as you point out, we aren't quite there with the regulatory framework yet and the data and the analysis. Do you have a map of all of the private native forestry approvals?
Yeah, absolutely, yep, that, that's all...
When you approve one, it's just based on the individual circumstances for that property, right? You don't need to do a sort of a, a local or regional assessment, you're not making a judgement about, you know, if, if this property and that property and that property all log at the same time, we're going to have this cumulative regional assessment. There's nothing like that in the approval process, is there?
We do do a risk assessment of each of the approvals that we approve, including what the neighbouring properties inhabit is on those, those neighbouring areas, so that is part of our risk assessment framework when we approve plans.
So if someone gets in first and then the neighbour wants to do it as well, there might be a restriction on them based on the fact that their neighbour's already gotten approval in similar habitat?
It would trigger a site visit by our staff to go and talk to the landholder.
Okay. How many of those sorts of site visits do you do in any given year?
I have to take that on notice, it's obviously been constrained since Covid at the moment.
Okay. Chair, I'm happy to hand over, I'll come back if there's, if there's time.
Yeah, I might just throw it, a couple of questions out there. It was, it was obvious from most of submissions and most of the evidence we received that we're going to struggle in terms of supplying the timber we need for the, for the housing boom. What, what work's been done from your departments in terms of improving inefficiencies, so we're getting, I guess, not necessarily, we obviously can't harvest more wood than the sustainable yield, but making sure that we're making best, best use of what we can get out to actually, I guess, alleviate the issue that we're going to come up against in, yeah, 2061 is...
2061, 2062.
Yeah.
So Chair, I might start with answering that question. So there's been a number of things that we've, that within the government we've done, and there are further matters, further thoughts being given to what can be done. You know, we're fully appreciative of the, the high and rising demand for timber and the fact that there are trade constraints on other sources of supply, which is in fact the main reason for the shortage that we're seeing, where the concerns are being expressed in the, you know, for example, by the construction sector. But within, but the key actions that have already been taken, so one of the, the major programmes within the bushfire industry recovery programme was what were called Stream 2 Sector Development Grants, and there are quite a few of those that went to forestry industry businesses in relation to proposals put forward by them to help them maximise the efficiency and productivity of the timber that will be available in order to ensure that those businesses were both sustained themselves, which is obviously significant from an employment, a regional employment perspective, but also in terms of then maximising output from those businesses that will then flow through to other uses, for example, in the construction sector. We've also, we also provided funding for accelerated re-establishment of plantation, the plantation timber in particular, and there was funding provided for nursery expansion and also for rapid replanting. One of the, one of the key efforts was a major salvage programme, particularly in relation to the harvest, the plantation sector, to get as much of the timber out as could be salvaged in order to, to ensure that that timber wasn't wasted. So pine does not recover from fire, but while it's still standing in the forest, in the plantation, there is a period before it deteriorates to the point where it is no longer useful. And so there was a major salvage operation to recover all of that timber before it deteriorated, and that has in fact resulted in about, I think the figures are something like double the normal harvest of that timber over the last 18 months or so. So we were seeking to recover everything we possibly could over that period of time, and then to ensure that there's rapid replanting and also investment in, in maximising the, the use of the timber that was available. Another initiative taken by the former Deputy Premier was to, which he took advantage of the opportunity provided by the closure of the China export market, to issue a direction to ensure that saw, a pine sawlog that would have otherwise been exported was retained onshore and went into, is going into the domestic industry. That's commonly referred to as the Walke Direction, that's where the plantations are up in the Walke Region on the northern tablelands. So that's just some of the initiatives that have been taken to try and, and address the shortfall. Yep, and I mean, as, and just further to the comments that, that David and Adam have made in relation to PNF, obviously the government cannot determine what might be harvested in the PNF space. It is obviously a standing stock of timber and the only standing stock of timber that is, that is available, but of course, any harvesting on the private estate is subject to the interest of the landholder and also the requirements of the relevant code.
Yeah, I think Mr. Veatch has just got a follow-up.
Yeah, thank you for that. But just to follow on, in answer to my question, the Australian Forest Products Association New South Wales, when I asked them, did they feel there was sufficient plantation, both softwood and hardwood in New South Wales to meet our supply going forward to say 20 or 30 years, they said the short answer is no. And then they went on to say that there's a, that ABERS Plantation Log Supply Report, 26 October 2021, demonstrates there's a stagnation in the plantation estate growth, and they also pointed to the Master Builders and AFPA report published in 28 September 2021 that said housing timber frame shortage by 2035. So they're saying there is a shortfall?
Absolutely, yes, and there's no denying there's a shortfall, and the shortfall is rising as demand for timber is rising. So hence, that's, that's also our, within the Department of Prime Industries, the significant interest we've got. So hence, that's that's also our um within the Department of Prime Industries, the significant interest we've got in uh in. In work in the in the carbon cycling um and that bioenergy space. Because if you can improve the economics of uh of plantation forestry uh by having other. Uh, products from that uh from plantations um that provide uh returns to the investor. Then that will obviously assist in stimulating in- in- investment in plantations. Uh, so that's another, so that's. So we've got a strong interest in that. We've been working on carbon cycling, as I mentioned before, uh for a long time. And there are gradual developments happening in in the carbon market uh space. Uh, we're also, we've also got a strong interest. And it's it and the fact that we're positioned, well positioned within the Department of Prime Industries and with our colleagues in local land services. Uh, to be um to be looking into um and promoting the benefits of forestry as part of farm operations. As broader farm operations, uh both plantation forestry and uh native forestry. Uh, so we are, we've also, we are also. Um, uh, looking into that uh in but in in terms of seeking to stimulate um increased supply of timber.
Just um following on with that we've rece- received from uh Timbuktu, New South Wales in terms of response to supplementary questions. They they've indicated that the uh timber supply has been reasonably stable in recent years, but they expect further decline. Uh, when the effect of black summer fires are actually brought to account. Do you have a r- rough idea when we're actually going to see? The the true bite of those black summer fires?
So there's two parts to, um, you may have a a response in relation to private native forestry, but uh there's two parts. Uh, to that question. One is the plantation estate, um particularly softwood plantation estate, and then there's native forestry. Um, the in the pla- in that softwood plantation estate, about twenty five percent of the estate was affected, both the public estate and also the private estate. It was very similar across the the two sectors. Um, uh, as I've already mentioned, there's a real flush. Of fire affected timber currently in in the system. Um, but once that works its way through. Uh, then we will start to see the impact of um a reduced supply of of domestic. Uh, softwood uh through to its various uses and that will, that will exacerbate the impacts of the of the uh current trade related. Uh, restrictions in supply. Um, I expect, we expect to see that start to start, well, we're already seeing that start to impact in the market. Um, and we expect to see that uh that that will exacerbate that situation. In the in the native forest estate and in particular in relation to supply from public land, uh so the uh the land that's managed by the forestry corporation. Um, the analysis, the analysis that that they have done uh on behalf of the government, um that long term ecologically sustainable yield forecasting. Which Mr. Veatch mentioned, uh Mr. Field mentioned, uh that ind- uh that work indicates that. Um, current levels of supply under those woods, under under current wood supply commitments will be able to be maintained for the term of those commitments. That they will not be impacted. Um, but then, once we get beyond the current commitments, uh the it depends on what region you're in. Uh, up the north coast and the north coast region, uh the impact is likely to be uh minimal if at if at all. It'll be, there'll be, there may be some slight reduction. Um, uh, in in southern New South Wales. And on the and on the southern Highlands, so coastal and southern Highlands, uh snowy valley, snowy valleys. Uh, that impact will be quite substantial as indicated by the sustainable yield forecasts, but not for the period of the current term of. Wood supply agreements. So we're looking like about ten years out into the future before that really starts to bite. But it will.
And what's, if I can, so about ten years, I mean, I live in Timbert, so snowy valleys.
I mean, the former deputy premier said straight out, um, you know, there's a time coming when it simply will not be business as usual. Uh, in this sector.
Okay, yeah, I'll leave it there.
Um, just quickly before I think Mr. Phil wants to jump i- in again. One of the issues picking up around civil culture and research and and what's been done by uh the various departments, we had evidence. Um, from some of the foresters that's said that ten years ago, there was a lot of on ground stuff. On ground work being done with the harvesting crews to improve their knowledge and education around, you know, areas of obviously productivity. But also, you know, civil culture and soil water control issues, but they haven't really seen anything being done in the last ten years. So I just thought I'd give you guys an opportunity to respond to that, because I've I've noted from you, Mr. Law, that there's a lot of research going on. But my concern about research is that sometimes it never actually gets to the practical stage and it's just research for research. And I I I'm really interested in to know what's been done with the research, how has it actually been translated into positive action? You know, o- o- on the ground.
Well, I can answer that in relation to wildlife ecology, not so much soil and water and silver culture, but um the research we do does. Feed into um the IFOA, so when it was being um prepared and negotiated, there were technical workshops that I was involved with. Where various different ideas were discussed about what um practices should be implemented. So there was that um avenue for. Um, direct input into changes in management. We also used to run um, and don't currently, but we used to run. Wildlife schools for um forest operators and um anyone who was interested in that on ground um knowledge. And so that that's, that that was a program that was run a a few times, a couple of times a year that extended for probably fifteen to twenty years. So, um, that's in the wildlife space. Um, maybe something else can be said about the other space.
Mr. Witherin or?
Yeah, look, I'm v- very happy to speak from a a private native forestry point of view and certainly when it came across to us. In terms of the approval function, there were three staff that transferred across from the EPA, so that was sort of the extent of uh resources we had there. We're now more than twelve people in uh terms of that team and as sort of Mr. Mellon mentioned there, that diversity of income. Stream there is it really important for for landholders, does provide an opportunity. We did see that through drought as well. Um, you know, where where there wasn't the the opportunity, you know, there with with stock or anything. But cer- certainly is with P and F in the longer term, that's important. You know, there's important opportunities there for. Aboriginal landholders a- a- as well. And um so we've had a really significant investment in terms of extension ca- capability. Therefore, landholders in in terms of really trying to um help them navigate their way through it. Because, you know, often they're they're not e- experts in in this space, far from it. So giving them sort of best practice. Uh, guidelines there in terms of environmental uh management, you know, running workshops and field days. And uh, you know, that's been a really big part of what we're doing on the ground. It is sort of that real practical engagement. With with landholders and in trying to uh sort of improve the the standards of o- o- operation there and. You know, we're we're committed to that well in into the future. And I think, you know, when we get to the point that those new codes have been a- a- adopted. You know, there'll be a really significant extension piece around around that. There'll be environmental monitoring. That that will accompany that and opportunities in terms of certification as as well. Um, I don't know if there's any more you want to add to that?
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I would add was we've, we've built a an extension program, I I think from the ground up. So we um got some funding through the Commonwealth's North East Forestry Hub to run. It on grand extinction days, which happened in Kiogal, Warhope and Grafton earlier this year pre- pre-Covid. And we've just finished a a series of webinar sessions, which are sort of lunch and learns for contractors and farmers. And we're really pleased with the result there. We had more than three hundred people attend those sessions, um, six workshops. So I think going into the future, that combination of of on ground extension days, where we give people the practical knowledge. But also those webinars where people can can dip in and and find some information uh over lunch for an hour. Would be a useful complement to what we're doing.
And within the Department of Prime Industries, uh we're also leading a uh what is in fact a national project. Uh, with the Australian Forest Contractors Association uh in order to um, uh to develop training and a credit. A a set of training modules and then industry accreditation uh for contractors. So those are the people actually out in the forest, driving the machinery. Uh, et cetera. Um, that project is is been, uh, the funding was provided uh uh by the New South Wales Government. Back in two thousand and eighteen for a four year project, which is now drawing to a close. Um, so that that and that. Uh, that training, uh and our particular interest has been, is in the sort of the environmental sustainability aspect of that training. Um, uh, that that's designed to to try to ensure that um that when you're actually out in the forest, uh boots on the ground. Uh, that the environmental performance uh of of those operations i- is improved. So it's the the training will reflect. For example, in New South Wales, the requirements of our integrated forest operations approvals, our plantations code, our private native forestry codes, et cetera. Uh, that's, that work is is ongoing as we speak, will will be concluded by the middle of next year.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, James, I want to try and get a bit of a better handle on the employment scenarios in the sector at the moment. Um, I I've seen various figures, direct and indirect figures attributed to um the sector. I'm particularly focused on, I guess, the native hardwood sector here. And I know that obviously the P and F supply contributes to that. In terms of mill employment and the like. The N R C report, um, uh. It specifies some estimated direct jobs. It seems to me these figures are pulled from answers that came from budget estimates questions though. So I think it'd be helpful for our inquiry to actually have a good handle on what the government thinks are the direct jobs. In, you know, forestry corporation, the mills, the other processes, the logging contractors, the haulage contractors. Can you provide an authoritative figure um for us to have an understanding about the implications here for the industry? And exactly how many people we're talking about here?
The uh there are no, we we rely on on ABS statistics, uh and ABS survey fi- um. Australian Bureau of Agriculture and Resources Economics survey figures, uh and they don't break down uh employment in this sector to that level. Uh, so the um the industry analysis team within the Department of Prime Industries, let's say, sort of the economics group within the department. Um, calculates estimates based on that, on on the information that is available. Uh, we can certainly provide that. And I've I've got some overarching figures here um that I can provide, I could, uh, i- if you've got specific questions that I might be able, I might be able to answer.
Otherwise, I can take it on notice. Ones on notice. Well, do you contest the N R C's figures in here that actually give us a breakdown for each of the subregions? Estimated jobs on in the south coast, and we're talking about in in the mills and in contractors and processing is sixty seven. Um, Eden two fifty, obviously got the chip mill down there. Um, they're, they're quite small figures. Um, on the north coast, estimated direct jobs, this is pre the fires, five hundred and ninety across all the mills, contractors, forestry corporation staff and the like. Do you do you contest those figures?
Uh, no, because I don't I don't know what the basis of those figures is.
If you, yeah, I'll I'll put questions on notice to that effect. I think it will be particularly useful for us to understand the breakdown. Um, here, because there are many different figures being circulated by all the industry groups or, you know, even government sometimes puts out. Um, figures which it are hard to actually get to the bottom of that. Um, I I'm, I don't want to. Uh, get too much into the policy response to the N R C report, uh and we don't have any politicians appearing today. But I I would like to get a sense if I could. The N R C's made substantial recommendations to additional prescriptions. Particularly in those heavily burnt areas, the areas they define as extreme and high and medium risk sites, which is the majority of the. Public native forest. Have any of those prescriptions actually been applied to um operations in public forests at the moment?
Uh, I can't speak to the specifics of the recommendations in the N R C report, uh which is a matter that's under consideration by the ministers. Um, uh, uh, so I cannot, I cannot um provide a, an assessment for the. For this committee as to the extent to which the addition, the um, the additional measures that the forestry corporation has voluntarily put in place. May reflect those, uh simply because I I don't actually know the answer to that. Uh, but the forestry corporation has uh definitely put in place additional. Risk management measures um further to uh both the site specific operating uh conditions process. That uh they're engaged in with the Environment Protection Authority. Um, a- a- and and I know that those, the measures they've put in place. Very closely reflect uh those that the EPA uh had been uh recommend, had been requiring and then recommending. To the extent to which they may or may not reflect what the N R C has has indicated, I can't comment.
Well, they make clear in their report and the EPA has said this publicly as well, that those additional prescriptions forestry corporation have applied. Are not enforceable. As a regulator, they can't uh enforce them. And the suggestion in this report is that they go nowhere near far enough. And it actually specifies that there's a risk of severe and irreversible damage. Should additional prescriptions not be applied. Um, uh, this is a difficult area because often we get thrown back to forestry corporation. Who who sort of have responsibility here, but the government ultimately needs to ensure that the rules um meet the principles of ecologically sustainable. Um, forestry management. It's pretty clear from this report, I cut to the chase, that the C F I O A is not adequate. To ensure that forestry corporation can meet its obligations under ecologically sustainable forestry management. Uh, I'm just wondering if you, if government has a has a comment on that. We're talking about a long term sustainability of the industry here. Expert report that suggests the C F I O A is inadequate. How do we rectify these two things? Does the C F I O A need to be reviewed?
So the the N R C's report on the C F I O A and the and the outcome and the impacts of the. Uh, those bushfires, the nineteen twenty bushfires, uh is with the ministers and a government response to to that report. And whether or not that may lead to uh regulatory change is in the hands of the ministers and cabinet and I can't comment any further.
Yeah, the fires were now, you know, quite a while ago, uh eighteen months at least, since they ended particularly on the south coast. All of the um forestry area on the south coast is prescribed under this report as either extreme or high risk. There's logging currently going on there that is well outside of the prescriptions. The EPA has no regulatory power here anymore, it seems, because it's been hived off to this independent report and forestry have put in place voluntary. Controls. So, uh, yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to understand how it is that any of the rules here and the principles. Underpinning the act are actually currently being applied in harvesting operations.
So the, I mean, the current rule set is the, in that region is the coastal IFOA, uh and unless and until the government decides to change that rule set. Um, the forestry corporation is both required and expected to to comply with it. Uh, and but in addition, they have chosen to self impose some additional risk management measures.
Okay. Um, there has been some suggestion um in some of the GIPPA documents that we got back. Last year that um forestry corporation in the aftermath of the fires was pushing for. Um, access to private native forestry. Um, I think they were engaging directly with L L S. That's certainly the suggestion in some of the minutes from the the working group uh meetings to get access for their contractors to. Um, private operations. Mr. Witherin, what's the extent of the cooperation between forestry corporation and the L L S? To get access for forestry corporation to be able to supply their customers um with private native forestry materials?
Yeah, certainly my understanding ve- very limited. I I think to talk in terms of fires, there are only about four percent. Of the private native forestry estate was impacted by the fires, so that that was sort of the good news there. And uh also, you know, within that, that was affected, there's sort of no um salvage harvesting um available either. But certainly um in terms of that working with forestry, um, you know, maybe you can comment on that, Mr. Tindall. But yeah, I certainly don't have any engagement a- as part of that uh wi- with forestry, so.
No, it's, so we we don't hand out the the the, obviously, the 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 details of private landholders to. To third parties without their consent. Um, I'd have to take it on notice, but my understanding is that um. We didn't approve any uh plan it plans for forestry corporation as a result of the fires.
I'm not suggesting that they were approved. Um, certainly the suggestions in in the emails um that were contained within the. The recent call for papers suggest, then they were the working group um minutes, um and it was, you know, forestry is pushing us for access to. Private native forestry. So I'm just wondering how that. So I'm just wondering how that happened was, you know, LLS contact, uh, uh, and this was on the South Coast primarily. Did it contact some private native forestry approval holders and suggest, hey, you might like to reach out to these contractors or to local forestry corporation branch and say, you, you wouldn't mind selling some timber? At the moment, they're looking for, um, for trees for local mills. Is that how it would have happened?
I, I'd have to take that on notice, yeah.
Okay. If, I'd like to get an understanding about a level of, um, cooperation around that. If, if I could, Chair, briefly go to, and Mr. Milham, you talked about, um, being able to find, you know, additional markets for the resources, um, in, in the forests. And the North Coast residues report, um, you know, clearly points to the department and the government, uh, generally looking to, um, use materials from our native forests for bioenergy. Um, would you agree that the fires have now changed the, um, uh, would have had a substantial impact on the available resource in the forest, uh, in terms of pulp logs and, and offcuts, um, that could support, um, uh, residues going to bioenergy?
Well, I disagree with the premise of the question in relation to that particular report, which is conducted, was written, the research was written, it was undertaken and the report was written by members of my forest science group. Um, the report actually didn't focus on bioenergy. It was a report into, um, determining, it was an extensive and comprehensive report into look into trying to determine the extent of the residue availability, um, in order to then, uh, desirably, uh, stimulate, uh, a, a market use for that. If it, it was basically about market information, uh, and that, then the use of it could have been of any nature. The report simply, uh, used the potential, um, energy generation from the amount of residues that was identified as being available after taking account of all the requirements for leaving, um, residues in the forest. Um, uh, it, it identified the, what that could potentially mean in relation to, an illustrative example being bioenergy. Uh, but the focus of the report was not on bioenergy. Um, the, the amount of the residues available depends upon, uh, what is actually harvested and then what is, uh, what is then, um, offcuts, et cetera, that happen, uh, in the milling sector. Um, whether, whether or not that has changed as a consequence of the bushfires would depend on the volume of the material that's come out of the forests. There is a, a, a reduced volume of material that's come out of those forests, uh, over the last, uh, um, two years or so, obviously because of, uh, access constraints in relation to the bushfires, you simply couldn't get in there to harvest. Um, and also in relation to subsequent, uh, heavy wet weather over the course of, um, last year and early this year as well. Um, so, uh, whether that, whether there is a longer, going to be a longer term reduction in the availability of those residues, um, such that it may reduce market interest in them, uh, when they're accumulated, uh, would be a matter for the, I guess, those who are, those who might have a, an interest in using those residues to determine.
Are you able to provide on notice the current volume under existing wood supply agreements, um, of pulp logs and other residues from native forest logging in New South Wales?
Uh, that would be a question that would need to be addressed to the forestry corporation.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll do that certainly. Uh, Dr. Annette Cowie, um, in the evidence that she provided to Land Environment Court recently, uh, in response to Red Bank, um, the, the Burden Earth Technologies Red Bank proposal to turn it into a major biomass facility, she cited the North Coast residues report. Their demand for biomass for that facility would pretty much consume all of the North Coast residues as, as, as illustrated, um, in that report. So, so it's fair to assume that there's a bit of a push-on by the department to see those residues used for, for bioenergy, right?
Uh, no. The, we've, we've, we've got an, as, as indicated before, we've, we've got an interest in, uh, in opportunities to in, to improve the economics of forestry, uh, both plantation and native forestry, uh, because that, particularly in the plantation space, we're looking to stimulate, um, production.
Sorry, I'm, I'm not talking about plantation here though, right?
No, but that's the, the broader interest that we have. We've also got an interest in, uh, in carbon outcomes and, um, and greenhouse gas emissions. And, uh, and part, and part of the, and international, um, scientific opinion is that part of that, of the answer to that problem, uh, is increased use of biomass for bioenergy as a substitute for, uh, carbon intensive fossil fuels. Um, and that also would have the, uh, added benefit of improving the economics, providing additional economic opportunities for forest managers. So that is our int- that is our interest. Um, whether or not, um, the, uh, the specific, um, uh, feedstock requirements of, of, um, recommissioning Red Bank as a, uh, as a biomass facility, um, could or would be met from our North Coast forests is a matter for, uh, the proponents as to where they believe they're going to be able to economically source feedstock.
Dr. Cowie directly contradicted in her evidence the EPA submission, um, to that proposal, where they contested that there was a higher value use for that material in large part on the forest floor. Um, uh, you know, for, in terms of ecologically sustainable forest management, there is a, a value of that biomass on the floor for habitat and regeneration and the like. Um, how, how, I mean, wh- what's the view of government about this? Because we've got two agencies and we see this a bit in, in forestry, either EPA versus forestry corporation or EPA versus the DPI. What is the position of the government about the highest value use of those materials?
Uh, that's, I, I can't comment, um, on an expert basis because I'm not on Dr. Cowie's evidence. Um, what I do know is that in, in relation to, uh, native forestry operations, the, the rules under which those operations are conducted, particularly on public, in public native forests, uh, already require, um, levels of residue to be left behind for habitat purposes. Uh, so any residue, any, anything that we might term as residues, uh, using that term, uh, would relate to, um, uh, to biomass that isn't, that the forest operator is entitled to remove over and above, uh, any habitat requirements, retention requirements. Uh, so I don't actually see that, uh, that's a question that, uh, well, it's a question that I can't answer from a technical perspective, um, any better than Dr. Cowie answered it. Um, and, but I don't actually see that it's a, it's a, it's a point of challenge between the agencies either. Uh, because the ha- the habitat requirements have been, are already being addressed through the regulatory rules.
Okay.
I might just throw to Mr. Veitch to wrap us up.
Yeah, Chair. Um, actually, my questions are to Mr. Witherton, so, and you may want to take these on notice. I'm just looking at the clock. But essentially, uh, as I understand it, uh, you sort of took over from the EPA, LLS took over from the EPA about April two thousand and eighteen, I think you said.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Can I, and you mentioned about a, a, an increase in your FTEs, um, since then. Can I just get a, a couple of things, well, probably more than two actually, aspects of this. Can you just provide us a schematic of the org chart now with that group of people that you've, uh, taken on board since then? Uh, and what, what their roles are, just so we've got a better idea about what, how you've had to gear up for this, uh, new role. And the second part is, um, I'd, I'd really like to get an understanding of just what LLS's role is here. How, how, how it actually, uh, how you operate in the PNF space? What your role is as per the requi- legal requirements that have been imposed on you? Um, and, um, and how that differs to how the, when the EPA were involved, so, or if it doesn't, if it doesn't. But if you could just take that on notice, I just, I just want some clarity around what LS's role is and a bit of an idea about what your uptake in staff looks like and why.
Yeah, yeah, we, we'd be really ha- happy to do that. And, uh, you know, then happy to follow up in more detail if you'd like to as well. Mr. Veitch, we can sort of ta- talk you right through that a- and explain how it all operates, so not a problem.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, um, looking for, for government, no, no wrap-up questions from the government. All right, well.
Always a good sign if you don't, the government members have any questions, you, there's nothing to clean up.
Yeah, excellent. Well, that's probably a good time to end. Two minutes early, that'll give us time to get the new witnesses settled. Um, but thank you very much for your time. You've taken a couple of questions on notice. Um, so the Secretary will be in touch, um, in terms of a timeline. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wish you all a good Christmas and, uh, yeah, ca- catch you back here in the new year, no doubt.
You will.
Yeah.
Estimates in February.
Yeah, yeah, yes. See, the dates popped into the diary already, so.
Before we know it.
Yeah, exactly. So keep safe.
Okay, welcome back to our, our next session, uh, in the inquiry into long-term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. Uh, we now have, uh, representatives from Forest Corp as well as the, uh, Deputy Commissioner from the Rural Fire Service. So starting, uh, with you, Mr. McKechnie, uh, can you state your name, position, title and swear either in open affirmation?
I am Deputy Commissioner Peter McKechnie, New South Wales Rural Fire Service. I'll be taking the affirmation. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Keeney?
I'm Dean Carney. I'm the Senior Manager of Planning with the Hardwood Forest Division of Forestry Corporation. I'm taking the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Anderson?
Dean Anderson, Regional Manager, Snowy Region, Softwood Plantation Division, Forestry Corporation of New South Wales. I take the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now and about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Uh, now would anyone like to make a short opening statement?
Yes, I will.
Yep.
Uh, so Dean and I are appearing on behalf of Forestry Corporation. I'd like to give a little bit of background on that. Uh, Forestry Corporation are a state-owned corporation. Uh, we are appointed under the Forestry Act to manage New South Wales state forests. Our land management functions include managing for conservation, so, uh, around half of the estate we manage is managed for conservation. Uh, it also includes protection of Aboriginal cultural heritage, provision of community access and recreation facilities, facilitation of tourism opportunities, uh, pest and weed management, management of activities such as beekeeping and grazing. We are a fire authority, so we have obligations in relation to fire management. All of our staff are involved in the firefighting effort. Um, most of us are trained on-ground firefighters and that includes Dean and myself. And of course, we grow and harvest renewable timber and wood products. Uh, we manage around two million hectares of multiple-use public forests. And that includes coastal native forests, the Western Cypress Forest, the Red Gum Forest in the southwest of the state. We have approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand hectares of softwood plantations and just under thirty-five thousand hectares of hardwood plantations. As an organisation, we have been around for over a hundred years. Uh, originally formed as the Forestry Commission in nineteen sixteen, we have been a corporate entity as Forestry Corporation since two thousand and thirteen. Um, our objectives, uh, as a SOC are set by the Forestry Act. Um, they're clear. They specifically set out that we are to operate as efficiently as any comparable business, to maximise the net worth of the state's investment, to have regard to the interests of the community, to apply the principles of ecologically sustainable development, to contribute towards regional development and to be an efficient environmental supplier of sustainable timber. Now, all those objectives are to have equal weight. That's as it reads in the act. Uh, importantly, we're not a policy agency, uh, but we are operationally focused. And to that end, we're the largest producer of wood products and, uh, the largest production forest manager in New South Wales. Uh, the raw products we harvest represent a sustainable supply of renewable timber that are used by a wide range of industry for a wide range of purposes. It includes hardwood and softwood timber for structural purposes such as housing, flooring, decking, external structural uses, uh, transmission poles, bridge timbers, landscaping materials and of course, uh, paper and packaging materials as well. Um, our business has two operating divisions, the Hardwood Forest Division and the Softwood, uh, Plantation Division. Um, both of our operating divisions are independently certified to the Australian Forestry Standard or the Responsible Wood Standard. And we are also certified to ISO fourteen thousand and one, the Environmental Management Standard. Uh, Dean Anderson and I appear here today as senior representatives on behalf of those two operating divisions. We are operational managers with expertise that align to the broad terms of the inquiry. Um, I am appearing in my capacity as the Senior Manager of Planning, uh, with the Hardwood Forest Division. I oversee the management of the forest management system, uh, strategic, tactical, operational planning. My team includes a range of forestry specialists, forest planners, fourteen ecologists, over thirty forest technicians who undertake our field surveys and monitoring. Dean Anderson is appearing in his capacity as the Regional Manager of Snowy for the Softwood Plantation Division, the Snowy Region. Um, manages plantations around Tumit, Tumbrumber and Bombala, which is the division's largest production area and also the region most significantly impacted by the twenty nineteen twenty wildfires. Uh, we are pleased, um, on behalf of Forestry Corporation to support the inquiry and we trust that we can provide some useful insights for the, um, the panel. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, given that was a written statement, are you happy to table that, so hand-sucked and just make sure everything's?
Absolutely.
Hundred percent correct translated. Thank you. I'll, um, throw out a questions.
Yeah, like it's me. I'll start off. Thanks gentlemen, thanks for your, uh, attendance today. Um, essentially, uh, I've got a few questions that arise from, um, the transcripts of the evidence that was heard earlier, I think back in September at this inquiry. So, um, sort of write a reply in some cases and other cases just to clarify what, um, people may have been talking about. Um, the first thing is, um, uh, we heard evidence, I think from Professor Gibbons, about the Forest stewardship, uh, council, the FSC, uh, or certification for, uh, anyway, they say it's a gold standard and Forest Corp should be, um, uh, you don't have FSC certification and it should. Can you explain to us, uh, is that correct that you don't have FSC? Um, and what does it, what would it actually mean to the operations of Forest Corp?
Uh, I guess as I said in the opening statement, we have, um, uh, certification under the Australian Forestry Standard or the Responsible Wood Standard. It's quite similar in many respects to the FSC standard. It's an Australian standard though. Um, and that's one that is a standard that most of our customers require. It's an internationally recognised standard. It's under the PEFC International Certification Scheme. So, um, we're happy to.
Sorry, you, PEFC, you might just, hand-side, hand-side will want to know what that stands for.
Sure, like I might have to give that one on notice. It's, uh, it's the International Forestry Standards. Um, that, that, um, it's a group of standards from all over the world.
Yep.
Um, so we're certified to that standard and, uh, we also meet ISO fourteen thousand and one. That's the Environmental Management Standard. Um, they're both really robust processes. We're subject to external independent auditing to achieve those standards. Um, it, it achieves what it needs to in the marketplace. Uh, in terms of whether FSC is the gold standard or not, I, I don't think I'll venture a specific opinion on that. But, um, we, we have our standard that we, that we apply, um, and I believe it's a, a robust standard.
So then, so what's the difference between the FSC that Professor Gibbons was talking about and others, to be fair, uh, and, and the, uh, ISO certification you have, the, the standards you're met, you're currently complying with?
Uh, look, it's, um, it's difficult to give a concise answer to sort of forensically say, um, what the differences are. I guess I'd probably frame it up in that they're, they're largely similar in the, in the aspects they, they, they look at as a standard. They operate differently. Uh, fundamentally, I guess, uh, the, the FSC standard arose in, in Europe. Um, and the Australian Forestry Standard arose in Australia around about the same time from my recollection. Um, but they, they have a lot more similarities than differences.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll go straight to the weeds question because I'm the guy who asks all the questions about weeds in this building these days. Um, we did explore though, um, uh, on a, I guess a serious, uh, issue that is, uh, the weed growth could, uh, as a contributing factor to fuel, to fuel load, uh, in the case of, um, forest fire. Um, and of course, I come from Tumit. So as you drive around, uh, uh, those forests now, one of the first things that grow back is blackberries. Um, just what are we doing to control the woody weeds, uh, in the undergrowth of our, uh, primarily our softwood forests, uh, Mr. Anderson, but also, uh, the hardwood plantations as well?
So if I could focus on the softwood to start with, so with, yes, you know, wheat are an issue for. So, with, yes, you know, weeds are an issue for numerous things. We've actually increased our funding for spraying the weeds along the fire breaks. One thing we have been doing over time is certainly getting on top of what's on our boundaries to make sure, you know, it's not spreading into our neighbours. We worked on the fences, we're now coming back where we're pushing it back into the plantation. The other one with the amount of bare ground we've got post the Dunn's Road fire, we're putting in holding sprays. So, rather than just wait and spray prior to planting, we're spraying early and spraying a couple more times so that we can really try and put the blackberry back in its place. The other thing, we had some trials in place where we were spraying under canopy after a first thinning. One of the issues is finding a herbicide that we can control the blackberry that won't kill the trees. So, we can use really good knockdowns during those pre-plant operations. What we trialled was using those knockdowns but with a spraying objective of keeping it below the crown of the pine tree. So, after thinning, we've got those open out rows and we can use machines like skitters or forwarders with spray units on the back. So, we're spraying underneath. Unfortunately, those trials got burnt, but just the, what we observed was that it really was good success. So, we've actually budgeted to do 500 hectares this year. So, we thin, you know, just about 1,000, so we're picking the worst 500 and going to spray those. And what we're expecting is that with the continual crown overstory with the spray underneath, by the time we get to the clearfall, there will be less blackberry, there'll still be blackberry, but there'll be less, which will give us more of a chance with those knockdowns when we re-establish. So, that's where we're trying to get to. So, staying focused on the weeds, not giving up, certainly understand that and spraying a lot more kilometres of road to keep those breaks open.
And I did say hardwood plantation, I actually meant hardwood forests.
Sure.
So, what are we doing there?
Well, there's a number of weed issues in a hardwood forest, they're endemic in the landscape in lots of parts of New South Wales and we typically work with other government agencies about being strategic about weed control. But there's, there's a number of really challenging circumstances there where you have weeds such as camphorol, lanthana that are readily spread by native animals and so it's, it's just a matter of continually to try and knock back where we can. In our hardwood plantation operations, we do undertake to do some eradication of camphorol, similar to, as Mr Anderson just outlined, regarding spray during the harvesting and replanting process. We're also currently undertaking with camphorol some trials of using that for biomass generation or even selling short logs if they're viable of camphorol, which is a particularly nasty weed in the north of the state. But it, look, just have to acknowledge that weeds are a continual challenge and as I said, the vectors that spread them are often natural forces, so it is a difficult and continuing challenge for our organisation.
Do we have a handle on how much this is a cost to Forest Corp annually?
Yeah.
Both in, both in actual expenditure but also lost productivity, lost productivity or productivity constraints?
So, if we could take that on notice, but in terms of the productivity, that was what we were trying to gain from those trials?
Yes.
So, we've been setback and been able to give you a more definitive answer on that. Yet weeds are competing for moisture, so you'd expect there'd be some tree growth loss, but I can't give you a definitive figure at the moment.
Yeah. And it's one of the other hearings I've been involved in, there was a discussion around this, people sort of dismiss weeds as a sort of a part of operation, you know, a cost that you have to incur, but in fact, it's, it's more than a billion dollar a year cost on the state's productivity every year. I mean, if you had a billion dollar loss every year for something somewhere else, there'd be, government attention would be really focused on why, but this just seems to be an accepted cost of practice, which I don't accept.
No, look-
Hence, I keep asking about this.
I'd have to agree with you. So, just from the early training back university days when we're looking at plantation establishment, all the cost analysis showed investment and weed control paid more than fertiliser and a lot of other productivity gains. So, staying on top of the weeds is important, it's just how you do it without killing the trees is always the problem. And in the native aspect, we also have to be super careful about what other species you can harm when you're treating weeds and it does get really tricky in that landscape.
It can be quite technical in its application, yes, yeah. Look, thank you, I would be keen to see what that information looks like when you, if you take that on notice. The other thing that was raised in the previous hearing days was more around silver culture practice and the need for, and I understand silver culture is pretty broad, like it's not just a defined thing, but, but there needs to be a greater focus on silver culture practice in our forests. Have you had a chance to look at the transcripts from the previous two hearing days to just see what the issues are that people have been raising?
No, it's not, but I'm happy to talk about our silver culture approach generally if that's, that would be helpful.
If you could, yep.
When we talk about native forest silver culture in particular, what we do when we go to harvest, which is where we practise silver culture, is for each area that we're planning to harvest, go through a thorough planning process where an assessment is made about the state of that forest. We look at the forest type that it is, that's critical because most forests will have a unique adaptation and an evolutionary mechanism to regenerate. So, we have to know, understand what sort of forest we're working with. We have to understand the structure of that forest in terms of its age class structure. It may have a single age class, it may be multiple age classes of trees in one forest. We have to have an assessment of that and then our silver culture options are also set through the Coastal IFA, our regulation. And we put those two together and come up with what is the best way to treat that forest so that we can sustainably harvest timber, but we can also regrow it and ensure that if there is growing timber that can be used in the future, that it's retained on site as well. So, there's a thorough planning process, those plans are produced for every single operation and every harvesting crew that's brought in is inducted into that plan and is explained to them what our expectation is and then we'll undertake monitoring to make sure that that silver culture is appropriate. Now, silver culture can be very different for, very different forest types. Some, such as the ash forests in the south, require more disturbance in order to regenerate. We've seen after the fires in particular, the adaptive mechanism for those species seeing great flushes of regeneration where the fire has been through. Other species, you can undertake selective harvesting and just take out a selection of the more mature trees that have good timber products in them while retaining other trees that are what we call advanced growth, so they are not yet fully commercially mature, but they will be in say 10 to 15 years' time and we need to shepherd those through so they are available for harvest at that time. But always with an eye to regenerate the forest and to leave it in at least as good a state as it is in and to ensure that we're working with those natural adaptive ecological mechanisms that those forests have.
Thank you. Now, my last series of questions before, I think the chair's got a few questions, so I'll hand him, but I just wanted, this, I just want to explore capacity of met our supply contracts and then planning beyond that. So, now, probably with Mr Anderson first around the softwood plantation post Dunn's Road, particularly down our way, it's down around Tumit, Tumbrumber. Substantial amount of that plantation was lost. Understand, I understand now that there's been a process to harvest as quickly as possible before the timber is, the stands are damaged any further, the, the mill, was it mill juice, the blue steel or steel blue?
Blue stone.
Blue stone, there. And then, and then the replantation process. So, if I can just ask first of all, are we meeting our, are we meeting, well, clearly there's a plan to replant the, the radiata pine, the softwood. Are we able to do that over a period of time that'll, in a structured way, that, so in the, in harvest time in 30 years' so time, it's not all coming on at the same time? So, I guess the first thing is, are we able to do this? And second thing is, are we structuring it and so that it doesn't all mature at the same time?
Yep. So, we did have a plan to replant by 27. We've had a couple of good years and so we're actually ahead of the game. The other way that we're ahead of the game is we've been monitoring the forest and anything that had good green crown, so it might have had a fire underneath, radiata normally, it just hates fire, it normally curls its toes up and drops dead. But there were big efforts on those days and there were some stands where the fire went underneath, but it didn't go as hot and some of those stands we've been able to hang on. So, with that and then being ahead with the planting, because last year we were 99.3% survival, which is unheard of, it was just a good wet year. So, with success there in terms of having more seedlings, retaining things, we look like we will be 25, 26, we will be back on normal programme. Yes, that creates a bit of an age class lump, but what we will do in consultation with the customers is try and stagger the thinning and the clearfall. So, you can always hang on a bit longer, but it's hard to push forward. So, therefore, in 30 years, rather than take them all out at 30, we'll take some 30, some out at 35, 36, we'll look to smooth that out over time. And we'll do something similar with the thinnings as well. There may be some stands that we may even select to early clearfall to make sure we make pulp commitments, take out some of that blip in the age class profile, flatten the curve so to speak. It sounds like COVID, doesn't it? But, but we might do that by generating a bit of pulp early, then replant it and then that will stagger the age classes to bring the sawlog more smoothly later on in time.
Okay. So, but you, but, but we are, we are able to meet our supply contracts going forward?
The current supply contracts, the sawmills in Tumbrumber have basically halved because of the immediate impact of the fire. There was, we can't make the trees 30-year-old straight away. So, we've renegotiated with the sawmills and re-signed 10-year agreements and the mills are going well. In fact, both mills are struggling for staff at the moment.
Yeah, 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 because people took the, yeah. Okay, and so then, same series of questions essentially but for the hardwood?
Sure.
So, both forest and plantation. So, we're able to meet our supply contracts going forward from hardwood?
Yes, we are, yep. So, I guess if you'd like me to expand on how we look at sustainable yield?
Yes.
So, we have a modelling system that looks 100 years into the future, so that's our, how we set our sustainable yield is to have a plan for 100-year period and there's a couple of principles in that. The first one is that we, we have a harvest now that is sustainable across that entire 100-year period and the other principle is that the, the growing stock that is present in the forest at the start is present in the forest at the end. So, we're not just whittling away the growing stock till there's nothing left, it's perpetual sustainable yield. So, within that, there's a range of factors that go into that modelling, but effectively we, we measure plots in the forest, those plots are put into a simulator that grows them and simulates harvesting, they have growth models and that gives us an answer that looks for, what is that sustainable yield from the forest? We undertook work in the immediate aftermath of the fires to work out what we think the impact of the fires is likely to be, was informed by the best available, available information we had and there has been some reductions in supplies forecast from that. But we have published that work and that's available, I'm happy to give the committee that work.
That would be good, thanks. And then, so the second part of that, the hardwood discussion though is around plantation, hardwood plantation. So, could you just advise the committee what work is being done to increase the hardwood plantation in New South Wales?
Well, I can talk about how we forecast yield from our hardwood plantation estate, so we have around 35,000 hectares of hardwood plantation.
Yep.
What we're, we're undertaking harvesting of that at the same time we harvest our native forests as such. The two resources on the north coast where our hardwood plantations are, the native forests and the plantation forests are modelled in one model. We run a plantation modelling process first that aims to maximise the potential yield of that estate over time. So, we have an estate that's characterised by early planting in the 1960s and 1970s, most of which was on either degraded forest or cleared farmland. Then we have a plantation trench that was planted after the RFA with funding from the government at the time. And then we have a few other epochs of smaller plantation establishment. There's no current expansion that we're undertaking in that space at this stage, but we are managing that estate that we do have to maximise the, the long-term sustainable yield from that plantation estate of high quality sawlogs, that is to say.
You may not be able to answer this, but there were some concerns raised by timber in New South Wales around wood supply agreements, so you may have to potentially take this on notice, but they raised concerns that Boral seem to have preferential clauses in their wood supply agreements dating back almost 17 years. You have any view or vision of that, those wood supply agreements in setting them up at all or?
Not in setting them up, obviously they, those clauses originate in 2003, that was before I had any visibility on that, so I'd have to take on notice where that originated from.
Yeah, if you could just take, I guess perhaps just take their whole, whole premise of their concerns on notice and come back to us and get some comments as to why those species preference clauses existed and-
Yeah, I can't talk about exactly why they've been inserted in contracts or anything because I wasn't privy to that, but look, broadly speaking, the original contracts that Boral purchased, and it's no longer Boral because Boral have sold those contracts.
They've indicated they're getting out of, out of timber essentially.
Well, they've, they've sold those contracts, so it's a different company that has those contracts now. But those, the original contracts were again not owned by Boral but came from two other family companies that, that sold those contracts to Boral many, many years ago. And the supply area of those contracts reflected the species requirements, isn't it? That's my understanding. In terms of how or where those particular clauses came from or throughout process, I'm not aware of that, I can take that on notice.
Yeah, that would be good. Can we just touch on the, I guess, the firefighting aspect, you know, you mentioned that you have your own firefighting unit and in fact, all your, all your workers are trained. How do you coordinate with the other firefighting agencies? Obviously, when a fire starts in, in either a softwood or a hardwood plantation, at what point do you call in, you know, the, the RFS or, and also to you Deputy Commissioner, at what point do you step in on the National Park Estate? Because during the last fires up on mid-north coast, we heard examples or stories of where perhaps you should have been called in a bit earlier, but the other agency said, no, 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 I've got it under control when invariably they didn't. So, just provide us a bit of commentary around when each, each agency steps in and helps.
It's also complicated by, so down Dunn's Road, there was Humes, they had their own as well, so a private softwood arrangement.
Look, I might, if the committee's happy, speak first. So, each of the fire authorities being Forest Corporation, National Parks, along with RFS and, and Fire Rescue New South Wales have a responsibility in regard to the response to fires, particularly Forest Corp and National Parks on their lands that they manage. Both Forest Corp and National Parks have a duty to report to the jurisdictional fire service, be it Fire Rescue or RFS, I suppose notably, the Forest Corp land is obviously in Rural Fire District. So, those relationships that allow that actually start a lot earlier than the response. We, we have the, what we call the coordinated firefighting arrangements within New South Wales. So, the local bushfire management committees that are make up, made up of representatives of not only those agencies but others, local government, Aboriginal land councils and others are, I suppose, already working through from bushfire risk management plans, what mitigation work should be done, how they should be prioritised. So, we're, what would you say, already in communication and at the table beforehand. If there's a report of fire, both parks and forests have a duty to respond to that. They also have a duty, as I was saying, to keep us informed as to what they are doing about that fire, what their strategies and tactics are. But ultimately, if the RFS commissioner forms the view that they're not dealing with that appropriately, we, we have the ability as a jurisdictional fire service to step in and, and take charge. And most, probably the most notable power in that regard is if, if the resources in the local area aren't likely to be sufficient to combat the, the fire or the fires, is a declaration under section 44 of the Rural Fires Act where the commissioner will take charge and appoint an incident controller. So, that's I suppose the technical around that. And then, the, the application of that across the state is quite practical, that by far the majority of incidents that we get are reported through the triple zero process. So, Fire Rescue or RFS are the first alerted. Organisations such as Forest Corp have a strong fire tower observation perspective which is resourced at certain times. observation perspective, which is uh resourced at certain times and is able to report back in um for them to respond to and again inform the fire service. But I think that gives you an overview of it and can take questions as.
If Chair, if I could use the that summer and the Dunn's Road fire as an example about how we operate together. So leading into Christmas, the weather was terrible. You could see things were bad. So the District Bushfire Committee and the Lima, the local emergency, we actually called a preemptive meeting. So with the RFS, the police, National Parks, the Town Fire Brigade, we met and we actually were developing an ignition prevention plan. Our biggest concern was idiots out there, you know, someone starting a fire. So we were already working cooperatively about how do we get the message out there? How do we increase the observation to try and stop ignition? Then, as you know, the days progress and we lend to the the faithful day, we've got our towers up, our towers are reporting. Anytime we get a fire, we log it into the icon system, which is an RFS-run system. So straight away, it's reported through to the RFS. They are aware of it. Initially, we call it a class one fire, which is just us on site, looking after our things. Class two means we're getting help from someone else. So on that morning, um National Parks had a fire in Coziosgo. We gave them our helicopter. It, even though it's something we engage, we've got contracted over the summer, it's there to protect the plantations. We use it to stop any fire in the landscape. And so they were the first to have a fire, so we sent our helicopter in that direction. So as you can see, it's a continual cooperative approach. We're talking to each other constantly, moving resources and prioritizing, as per the act, life property. Does that answer your question?
No, that's good. Um but just going back to some of the questions Mr. Veach had about the expansion of the plantation and note that we're we're not doing any work expanding the native hardwood. But a lot of the submissions that we've had have stressed the need to expand the softwood plantation. Now, some some of those submissions have come from people that want all native hardwood stopped and then been taken over by um softwood. But there's also a call from the industry to to expand our softwood plantation. So to you, Miss Ensign, what's been done to expand that? Given that now you're centered around the snowy region, but you might have some vision of what's happening elsewhere as well.
Yeah, look, so the immediate focus has been reestablishing the land that we've got. But looking further down the track and expansion, expansion where someone goes and buys large chunks of land is most probably off the cards. Um land prices have gone through the roof. Um it makes it really difficult to be able to do a justification to go and purchase land and put in a plantation from scratch and wait the thirty years. One of the um things is that when we look to buy land, we use discount cash flow. So we look at that thirty years and discount all that way back, you know, and if you're using seven percent, that certainly caps what you may pay for land now while you wait those thirty years. Where other people who are competing for the land, the farmer, that they're operating must probably similar to people in Sydney buying houses. They're buying it under that expectation that in ten years, the land will double and they will have that option of selling the land. Where once we put it under a plantation, as Dean pointed out with our modeling, we keep talking a hundred years. So we never think about selling that land down the track. So we never get to realize that doubling of the land every ten years. So where we must probably need to move is encouraging farmers to think about them growing trees. I don't think it works, people growing trees on their land, but them taking some ownership and seeing it as part of their whole farm mix. Um and the industry can assist there through off-take agreements. You know, if they're looking for more resource, they can certainly put stuff forward about how they can make people feel comfortable that there will be a market down the track.
Okay, thank you. I'll throw to Mr. Field, you've got some.
Like good, Chair, that'd be great.
Thank you, gentlemen. Sorry, I missed the beginning. Um my questions are almost exclusively for you, Mr. Keeney. I'm interested in the hardwood sector. Um can I just check, have have you seen the NRC's report that was leaked last week, the Coastal IFO Operations Post Twenty Nineteen Twenty Wildfires Assessment?
I'm advised that that's a cabinet and confidence document and it's not something I'm prepared to comment on on basis.
Oh, I'm not asking if you've uh to comment on it necessarily. I'm just asking if if you've seen it, it it does speak to the future of this sector and its viability and sustainability in time. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand if you've seen.
Again, it's that that is part of a cabinet process that is cabinet and confidence and I'm just not prepared to offer comments on on that.
Fine, uh has Forestry Corporation provided comment on the contents of it at all to to government?
Uh look, again, it's it's a it's a cabinet and conference process and it's not something for me to cap to comment on, yeah.
No worries. It it identifies that areas that are currently being harvested um in New South Wales, particularly on the south coast, but across the entire coast, uh as either representing an extreme or high risk of um environmental damage, potentially irreparable damage as a result of harvesting under the CFIWA prescriptions. Um has Forestry Corporation changed any of their practices at those sites in line with the recommendations in this report preemptively?
Uh I can't talk about that report specifically. Uh I can talk about what we're doing and I can talk about, I guess, the rationale and the thought process we've been through in terms of what we're doing in fire-affected landscapes. Um if you'd like me to provide some insight into what we're doing and how we've arrived at those uh decisions and and what we're doing to add additional environmental safeguards into far-affected landscapes.
I think some of that probably has been canvassed previously in 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 public debate and discussions. Plus, you've you've published that information on your website. I'm aware of that. This report is subsequent to those voluntary conditions that you've implemented once Forestry Corporation walked away from the site-specific conditions agreed with the EPA. So I'm trying to understand whether or not any of these additional prescriptions have been implemented preemptively by Forestry Corporation, particularly in those extreme and high-risk um management areas that I know you're currently operating in.
Look, again, your your question uh is asking me to comment on the subject of a report that is cabinet and confidence, and I'm not going to do that. Um I can talk to how we're uh undertaking our harvesting in far-affected landscapes. We have been through a thorough process there to look at all of our obligations. Our obligations stem from the Forestry Act, I read those out in the opening statement. And we have to balance all of those obligations. It includes socio-economic factors, it includes timber supply, it includes environmental uh controls, it includes sustainable development. Um we also have obligations under the regional forest agreements um to ensure that we're implementing the precautionary principle when we harvest. Um and we have all of the obligations under the coastal life way, of course, and and our regulation. And we have undertaken um a thorough planning process in all of our timber supply to ensure that we are meeting those obligations. We are applying those conditions voluntarily over and above the coastal life away. There's a range of safeguards at a range of levels. Uh we have additional ecological surveys in place, we have additional soil and water surveys in place. We have additional standard conditions, we have other conditions that rely on those assessments.
That none of those are enforceable by the regulator, the EPA, because they're voluntary, correct?
What is enforceable is the coastal life away by the regulator. And it's a really thorough mechanism that requires a whole.
If it's thorough, why are you doing additional ones?
Well, we are doing additional ones because in response to our assessment of our requirements under the regional forest agreement to apply the precautionary principle, where we are and have undertaken a planning process that's taking into account uh the impacts of the fires, the regeneration recovery of the forest and our obligation to ensure that our um operations meet the precautionary principle. So we are applying additional safeguards on that basis where we believe they are effective in in offsetting any impacts and allowing for the recovery of the forest. Why would we continue to meet our other obligations under the act, which are to supply sustainable timber to the industry?
This report suggests that the CFIWA is not fit for purpose in its current form. And it also suggests without these additional prescriptions recommended that Forestry Corporation runs at risk of not being compliant with its ecologically sustainable forest management obligations. That's in line with what the EPA said uh in September last year as well. Why did you, and I'm not talking about you personally, I appreciate I'm talking about the corporation. Why did the corporation refuse to continue to cooperate with site-specific operating conditions with the EPA and instead implement unenforceable voluntary conditions?
Okay, uh again, I won't make any comment in relation to the report because it is cabinet and confidence. Uh in terms of our decision-making around how we would apply additional measures, um we had been initially in discussions with the EPA about the the best way forward. Um we used site-specific conditions when they were appropriate. So in the immediate aftermath of the fire, there were two major considerations that triggered that. So site-specific conditions um is something that sits inside the coastal life away. It's condition twenty-three point four, if I remember correctly. It allows for Forestry Corporation to apply to the EPA for site-specific operating conditions where we can't meet all of the conditions of the coastal life away. Now, there were two major concerns we had in the immediate aftermath of the fire. The first one was that the ground vegetation had been significantly affected by the fires and therefore soil stability was of concern. And we didn't think that it was possible to meet the objectives of the coastal life away by applying the standard conditions. And the second one was a safety concern because after the fires, um there are a range of uh elevated hazards, um particularly from trees falling, uh crowns collapsing where there'd been fire impacts, but also uh just unrevealed burning stump holes in the ground and things of that nature. There's a real safety concern about undertaking our surveys. And so the implementation of those full surveys, as described in the coastal life away, were also a concern to us. And so in that, in that manner, for for those two particular triggers, we applied for site-specific conditions under the coastal life away. As the forest recovered and started to regenerate, those two specific triggers abated largely. And therefore, there was no specific trigger under condition twenty-three point four of the coastal life away um to apply for those site-specific conditions. On that basis, again, we we examined all of our obligations and all of our options and determined that the best pathway was to apply those conditions voluntarily. And there's some genuine benefits for that. One is that they can be responsive to uh the condition of the forest recovering. We can tailor them to each region and each operation. We can uh change them with based on new and emerging information. And so there there's something that we can apply um and we can ensure a fit for purpose.
But they're unenforceable by the regulator, correct?
They're unenforceable by the EPA, but they are enforceable by us. So when we write a harvest plan and we put into that harvest plan that we expect additional buffers, for instance, on the on the right, the old growth or the riparian protection zones of the rainforest, those conditions are enforceable for by Forestry Corporation and we enforce those on on the people undertaking the work.
The EPA's annual report that came out, I think, two weeks ago, uh indicated that there were ten prosecutions underfoot um for forestry uh operations in New South Wales. Uh how many of those are prosecutions against Forestry Corporation?
Um I I haven't seen the report and I'd probably best take that on notice.
Well, it I it's not so much about the report I'm referring to. It just is an indicator that these prosecutions prosecutions are happily happening. You you must have an indication of how many prosecutions are currently occurring by the regulator against Forestry Corporation or its contractors for breaches of either the CFIWA or the so- specific um site operating conditions.
Uh look, um I am aware of of some uh issues and I'm aware of some prosecutions. But I I I don't want to mislead or provide a number that's just.
Sure, no, I'm happy for you to take it on notice. I wasn't asking you to comment on the EPA's report, it's my indicate, it was just that that's how we became aware of it. It wasn't public knowledge before then. Um I think people would be surprised because traditionally there have not been a lot of, there's been some fines, but not been a lot of prosecutions. I guess the point is that uh my focus in this inquiry is on the sustainability of the the hardwood sector, the native forests, public native forests. Uh I know you don't want to speak to this report, but it's it sort of backs up the sustainable yield assessment, thirty percent hit on the south coast. Um but it also points to a declining supply, particularly of large-quality sawlogs on the on the north coast uh into the future. And obviously, you've targeted your plantations on the north coast pretty heavily to um maintain supply at the highest level possible since the fire. So that will have a an impact over the short to medium, potentially long term as well. I think I I just as I came in, you were making a response to Mr. Veach um about being able to meet future contracts. Um but contracts are up in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-eight. You must be anticipating that this will be a contracting sector into the future, at least into the medium term.
Uh so that's that's not how I look at it. As I say, when I undertake strategic planning, when my team undertakes strategic planning, we have a a one-hundred-year timeframe. That's what our our modeling period is. And so we think in one hundred years when we think about the level of sustainable supply. Um now, contracts aren't made for that entire period and contracts can come and go and supply levels can change. Um but fundamentally, our plan is to have that long-term sustained yield. And as I said, and perhaps if I could elaborate a little, uh those those models are looking at sustainable yield in terms of the sustainable yield of high-quality logs. That includes high-quality large logs, high-quality small logs. On the north coast, it requires us to have a a or actually, what we implement is a sustainable yield, not just of high-quality logs, but high-quality logs of particular species groups. So we want to ensure that we have um the same annual supply available into the future for a hundred years of high-quality blackbutt, of high-quality spotted gum, of high-quality tallow wood and blue gum. So we have a whole range of those requirements within our our modeling. And so we don't envisage a a reduction as such, so much as we're planning to have a long-term sustainable yield. Now, in some places, we actually will see um a potential increase in the yield over time, uh where you have impacts of the fires, for instance, that may have um reduced yield in the short term. You'll find that those have regenerating stands of hardwoods that will be maturing in fifty, sixty, eight eighty years, that will be, actually see a a potential increase in the sustainable yield in the long term.
I mean, this this report, I assume, is based off largely your figures. The south coast, it points to, you know, a twenty, at least a twenty percent um projected uh de- decline in high-quality um small and large logs combined out to about twenty sixty-four and only slowly increasing out to twenty ninety to get back to sort of twenty eighteen RFA levels by the end of the century. Um and you see a a a large high-quality log decline from about a hundred fifty thousand tonnes down to almost a hundred thousand tonnes, that's a third out, well, basically out to twenty twenty. So it suggests something's got to shift here, right? Those contracts are going to have to change and be reduced for them to be viable for you to deliver on into the future.
Um again, you're you're quoting from a report that I'm not going to comment on.
Well, this is these would be your figures, though.
Well, as I was going to say, we have published our own um sustainable yield figure, so we.
Well, that is even thirty percent on the south coast, though. So you can't possibly maintain south coast contracts at the same levels with thirty percent sustainable yield here.
Well, so when we set wood supply contracts, we set them to be in line with the long-term sustainable yield. So there will be a reduction.
That will be, that's that, but that's my point, right? So thirty percent reduction on the south coast, this must mean that the sector ultimately has to change. I mean, the mills on the south coast can't sustain thirty percent into the future. There's going to have to either be a consolidation, um a contraction in the sector or a change in the use of these materials. Have you started negotiating the particularly, I know, south coast contracts are currently, I think, on just on a rollover basis, north coast ones, the twenty twenty-three ones. Um have you started renegotiating these contracts with customers?
Uh no, not to my not, not to my knowledge, I should say. Um yeah.
Is that a decision for Forestry Corporation or is that ultimately a decision sort of bound up in this cabinet process with this document?
Uh I'm not going to comment, I guess, on that document. But um when we make wood supply agreements, we always do so in consultation with the the government and the minister.
But who would ultimately decide to commence? I mean, not, some of these mills are screaming out, I mean, they're they they need some certainty. These contracts expire in twenty twenty-three. It's, you know, getting, you know, obviously getting close. Um they've got no certainty about these contracts going forward. The force majeure has been in place now for, well, I'm sure it's, it'll be over two years um early next year. It's not about to lift anytime soon based on evidence here. So wh- when would you reasonably expect to start renegotiating those contracts?
It must probably be worthwhile us taking that on notice and responding a bit more in full about timeframes.
Sure, sure. Um there uh has been, there was an ELI process run by Forestry Corporation a few years ago to look at finding um customers or expressions of interest for customers for the pulp logs and sort of other offcuts from the um the public native forestry sector. Has that process um recommenced? Are you still looking for customers for those for those products?
Uh we are in discussions with with uh people who were successful in that process.
So this has been going for a while now. Have you got any sort of timeline on when you'd be looking at um starting to supply that material into the market? And what sort of volumes are we talking about?
Uh I'm not aware of timelines or volumes, so I'll have to take on notice to see if we have those numbers, but I'm not aware of any.
If you could, that'd be. If you could, that'd be good. You must have a bit of an idea of the volumes that are available. And that process started before the fire. So I'd be interested to know if there's been a reduction in the amount that you've made available to the market based on the impact of the fires as well. That would be very useful. I'm happy to hand over to Chair, we'll keep going.
I exhausted mine at the start.
I've exhausted mine, so if you want to keep going.
Okay, thank you. During the early stages of the fires, there's been some suggestions made in other hearings and I've seen emails between forestry, oh, sorry, minutes from meetings where Forestry Corporation, it was suggested they were asking LLS to provide access to private native forestry to be able to supplement supplies to customers. Can you explain how Forestry Corporation goes about trying to get access for their contractors or to be able to source private timber or timber from private native forestry to meet customer needs? How does that process work?
Sure, I can't speak to those particular emails.
It was minutes from some of the planning meetings.
I'm not specifically aware of those, but I can talk in general. I mean, we don't do a lot with private native forestry. And what tends to happen is that if we are harvesting an area or undertaking planning, I should say, in an area, if we happen to have either a conversation with a neighbouring adjoining property or somebody contacts us and says they would like to have timber harvested on their property, we can offer a service, we can look at assisting with the planning process and the marketing process. We offer that, there's a contract model we have that says, okay, well, we'll undertake that work. But it's not something we actively or specifically pursue under normal circumstances. It's just something that happens generally through, I guess, happy coincidence that we are operating in an area are able to leverage off that in order to access other volumes as well from private property. And it's something that they, the private property owner is also, you know, keen to undertake.
The suggestion in these minutes was that Forestry Corporation was seeking access to private native forestry to be able to support supplementing, you know, the timbers from public native forests for their customers. So in that instance, are you sort of saying to the private landholder, hey, listen, we can organise for the contractors and we can provide you with, you know, someone to sell it to? Is that, then, do you facilitate a direct relationship between them and the mill? Or do you guys buy it directly off the private landholder and sell it? How does it work?
Given how specific the example is, it might be better that we take it on notice and give you a full answer, if that's okay?
Okay, no, I appreciate that, that would be useful. Okay. That's it for me, Chair.
Okay, I'm looking to questions.
Thank you, Chair. Just to the witnesses, do you have any final comments or observations that you wish to share with the inquiry before we wrap up? Any points that have been raised today that need clarifying?
No, look, I think the question about us working together, the RFS, National Parks, you know, the, sorry, I've got to stop calling them townies, fire and rescue. Yeah, look, it's been a long cooperation. I first met Peter back in the late nineties. I was in Bathurst and he was Bathurst and we've been cooperating on fires over that whole time period. And when Peter mentioned section forty-four and the commissioner appointing incident controllers, I've been one of those, you know, I've been a nominee. And when you become the nominee, you know at that point in time you are working for the commissioner and you are working for the people of New South Wales at the highest level.
Probably just reinforce that, look, I think that longstanding relationship between state forest, now Forestry Corporation and the Rural Fire Service has been to the benefit of both agencies during that time and the broader benefit to the communities that they're within through the local arrangements like our bushfire management committees. I only see that relationship actually strengthening. We're finding more and more ways to actually work together, which may be a little bit hard to believe given how long the relationship has been standing for. But I suppose we're ultimately always looking for another way to be able to do things. And I think it serves the community very well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our questioning. You have taken some questions on notice, so the committee secretary will be in touch in terms of a timeline to get back to us on that. But thank you very much for your time and safe travels back to wherever you're going.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Have a good active season.
Yes. Guess all the best to everyone for that time of the year.
Yep, all right, so welcome back to our last session for today in the inquiry into long term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. We now have representatives from the Environmental Protection Authority as well as the Natural Resources Commission, so starting with our first witness to my left, ask that you state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
I'm Hugh Darren White, I'm the Commissioner for Natural Resources. I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Wild.
Bryce Wild, Executive Director of the Natural Resources Commission of New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Tracy Mackey, CEO of the EPA. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
David Fowler, Executive Director, Regulatory Practice and Environmental Solutions from the New South Wales EPA. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Would anyone like to start with an opening statement? De Wild?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all today. The Natural Resources Commission is an independent body established under the Natural Resources Commission Act with the purpose of establishing a sound evidence base for the properly informed management of natural resources in the social, economic and environmental interests of the state. Being an independent advisor, the commission is not subject to ministerial direction in the formation of its advice. In New South Wales, there has been a serious lack of data on the health, condition and productivity of our forest ecosystems and the industries they support. Both industry and community have called for ready access to credible data on the sustainable use and stewardship of New South Wales forests, whether they be on national parks, state forests, crown land, Aboriginal land or private land. In response to this, the former Premier engaged the commission in 2019 to oversee a statewide cross-tenure monitoring program in collaboration with New South Wales agencies and independent experts. The program seeks to join up forest science, monitoring and research across government, academia and the private sector and also the community sector. This program aims to deliver firstly baselines, then deliver priority and timely information across all tenures that enables effective data-driven decision-making for the future of New South Wales forests and the multiple values they support. To date, this program has established New South Wales' first landscape scale cross-tenure baselines on forest extent, biodiversity, water quantity, carbon and soil health, initiated improvements to mapping fire extent, severity and recovery post-fire, examined risks to coastal forests post the 2019-20 wildfires, delivered the nation's first dedicated plan to monitor cross-tenure regional forest agreements, commenced targeted monitoring on the effectiveness of the coastal IFoa, undertaken Aboriginal-led country-based cultural values assessments and commenced landscape scale forests and fauna monitoring with agencies, combining cost-effect of remote sensing technologies with on-ground monitoring. This whole of government program has invested over $5 million to date with nearly 40 project partners including leading universities and research institutions, New South Wales agencies, Aboriginal groups, citizen science groups and private sector scientists. The program has been recognized for conducting the largest and most significant analysis of forest biodiversity in the history of forest management in New South Wales, but there is much more work to be done. The commission also oversees other research programs including a five-year statewide research program on forest dieback, a three-year koala research program on state forests and undertakes other forest-related reviews as requested by the government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wild, would you be happy to table that written statement just so handside can get it right?
Certainly.
Excellent, thank you. I might just throw to Mr. Field if there's no other opening statements.
Unless Miss Mackey wanted to make...
Miss Mackey, did you want to make an opening?
I wasn't watching.
Thank you Chair and thank you for your attendance here today. My focus, I guess, in this inquiry is on the future of logging in the public native forest sector and to some degree the private native forestry sector as well. It is difficult to have a discussion about the long-term future of that industry without at least acknowledging the recent report that's come to public attention that was prepared by the Natural Resources Commission about coastal IFoa operations post 2019-20 wildfires. I understand you may have difficulty speaking to the contents of it, but I guess I just wanted to thank you for your work in providing that information. I'm sure that both government and the public are very interested in the contents of it. Miss Mackey, I might go to you in the first instance though, have you reviewed this report by the NRC?
We certainly provide advice and input to the NRC across a range of the work that they do, including that work, and we have seen a copy of that report.
Okay. The NRC report recommended that given the high risks associated with forest operations in severely fire-affected landscapes, its advice should be given legal standing to best meet the objectives of the Forestry Act and the principles of ecologically sustainable forest management. I guess that leaves open the suggestion, not dissimilar to the one you made in your letter to Regional New South Wales and Forestry Corporation in September last year, that current logging practices, particularly in those extreme and high-risk areas, don't meet the objectives of the Forestry Act and the principles of ecologically sustainable forestry management. Can you comment on that in the first instance?
So obviously the NRC have provided that report to government and it's for government to consider its policy position, so it wouldn't be fit for me to comment about where government might land in terms of that consideration. What I would say is that we think the report is comprehensive. It certainly canvases the full range of issues that we've certainly been looking at and considering in our own regulatory decision-making since the impact of the 1920 fires, and we look forward to being able to continue to do more in this space.
It's now over a year since you wrote that letter to Regional New South Wales and Forestry Corporation. It was quite extraordinary at the time, the implications were that if they started to log outside of the site-specific operating conditions, that there was a risk they would be in breach of their obligations under the Act. Do you think that they are in breach of their obligations under the Act?
As we've discussed at estimates, and I'm happy to go back a bit if that's helpful, but we did have the site-specific conditions regime in place for quite some time, around 12 months it operated for, and we certainly took advice from a range of experts, not just in the environment space, but also to understand the impact of sustainability on some of the things that we were looking at, to ensure that the impact on the forest was mitigated, given the severity of those fires. And so that was the arrangement we put into place, that was a very helpful arrangement to give Forestry Corp an opportunity to continue to undertake the activities they need to with those heightened considerations around the environmental impacts at the same time. We're certainly, at this point in time, with Forestry Corp reverting to operating under the CFIoa, under its usual provisions rather than the site-specific provisions, we continue to monitor very closely the activity, and if we do see any non-compliances, then we are acting swiftly.
But are they non-compliances with the CFIoa that you're talking about?
Yes.
And at this stage, your annual report pointed to the fact that there were 10 prosecutions, I think underway at the moment with regards to forestry operations in New South Wales. Are they prosecutions against forestry corporation?
Yes, they are.
Can you provide any more information to the committee about the prosecutions, the nature of them, what particular forests are we talking about here?
So there's 10 charges across three forests. They relate to Wild Cattle Creek State Forest, and that was the incident that prompted us to issue a stop-work order in 2020. So that prosecution relates to the felling of a, I'm going to get the terminology correct, a giant tree. So that's that one. Then there are two other prosecutions, one in relation to Dampier State Forest and the other one in relation to Tomorong State Forest. I don't have the details of those two at hand, but I'm happy to provide that to the committee.
Okay. Are there other investigations underway, particularly with regards to South Broomen and Mogo, where I know stop-work orders were issued last year?
Yeah, I'm just, my colleague David can probably help, we're just going to pull up the current list.
So currently, under investigation, we have activity in the conglomerate state forest, Wild Cattle Creek, South Broomen, Mogo, Lower Bucka, Yambala, another investigation in South Broomen.
That would suggest that compliance isn't great.
Look, I think from our point of view, compliance has improved. I'm not saying it's where it needs to be, but we've certainly seen some improvement from where we were a couple of years ago, and we continue to put in, as we've talked about a number of times, additional resources and a range of extra steps in the way we're regulating to try and make sure that we're seeing things early before there's any further impact. So we've also been working fairly closely with Forestry Corp at a senior level and an officer level, looking at and suggesting a range of tools and activities that they can use to ensure compliance and try and limit the impact to the environment.
Okay. Currently Forestry Corporation is logging in a number of sites that the NRC's report identifies as either extreme or high-risk. The high-risk ones that I'm particularly familiar with are on the south coast, including around Shallow Crossing and Mogo. The concerns around the stop-work orders there last year were about the impact on hollow-bearing trees. The NRC's report has some pretty striking things to say about the risks here, and I'll just quote from it, it says, "While the commission has not been asked to review existing prescriptions, we have been asked to recommend using best available evidence, best practice approaches to manage forestry operations in fire-affected forests. Available literature and work currently in progress under the coastal IFoa monitoring program suggests that the existing prescriptions may not be adequate to maintain the hollow resource in the long term following the 2019-20 wildfires." There are so many species that are hollow-dependent, on the south coast, well, across the coast, but the south coast was obviously the worst affected. How are you ensuring that impacts on hollow-reliant species are not being caused by forestry corporation's current operations in those high-risk areas?
It's a very broad question.
Kind of specific.
Just in terms of the way, as you would well know, the way the CFIoa is constructed, it doesn't go to us regulating in that way, so we're confined to the construct of that IFoa to be able to regulate against it, which is why we went to the site-specific conditions.
That's the point I'm trying to get to, right? You implemented site-specific conditions to protect hollows for a particular reason. Forestry Corporation now refuses to operate under those. Are any of their voluntary prescriptions protecting hollow-bearing trees in those forests?
We have been quite clear that we have no oversight around their voluntary provisions, and part of the reason why we want to be really clear about that is the site-specific conditions were site-by-site, looking at, you know, what the circumstances were, what the species are, you know, what they're seeking to do on that site, what mitigations they're seeking to put in, whereas the voluntary component isn't quite as, doesn't take that same robustness in terms of the site-specific considerations. same robustness in terms of the site-specific considerations. So it would be difficult for us to indicate whether or not we believe the voluntary components that they've put in place are adequate or not, because we took a very different approach when doing site-specific conditions.
So I guess to cut to the chase here, regardless of the fact that there's evidence on the table that suggests that the CFIOA prescriptions are not adequate to, you know, meet the principles of ecologically sustainable forest management, you're largely powerless to act until government make a decision on what to do about this report and whether the CFIOA should be amended or whether there should be additional prescriptions put in place in fire-affected forests.
We will continue to look at all of the available evidence, including the NRC's report, including taking further legal advice to determine whether or not there are additional steps we need to take at any point in time. We, part of what we're doing at the moment, if you like, an alignment, so we had done a risk assessment on what was extreme and high-risk equivalents. The NRC have taken a slightly different approach and come up with some different ones that sit in there, so we're currently marrying those two up and going to the sites, looking at them, looking what the impact is, and as we get that additional information as well, we'll also provide advice to government and consider ourselves whether or not there are any additional steps that we need to take.
Professor Durant-Wide, do you think the CFIOA is adequate to be able to ensure that forestry corporation's operations can meet the requirements of the Act and their principles of ecologically sustainable forest management?
I'm going to defer to my colleague Bryce to answer that question, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Yeah, the Coastal IFOA is a good example of a move across the world to a shift towards a retention-based forestry, B, multi-landscape protections, and C, outcome-based regulation. So in itself, it was a significant improvement from what there has been in the past. As with any instrument, when there's new evidence or data which emerges, it's prudent to consider the adequacy and whether or not there could be any changes. But overall, the Coastal IFOA is aligned with principles of ESFM.
Your comment, and I'm not attributing it to you personally, but just from this report, the 2019/20 wildfires have significantly increased the current and future risks associated with harvesting due to the large extent of fires and the significant damage to species and the habitat they are dependent on. The suggestion in this report is that the CFIOA is inadequate to be able to address these broad-scale impacts. The site-specific conditions were probably not appropriate to be able to manage those, and that the CFIOA needs to have some sort of trigger to be able to be modified to meet, you know, a broad impact such as the fires. Am I understanding that analysis correctly?
Yes.
Yep. Which would suggest that it's time for a review of the CFIOA in the context of the fires and your findings.
That would be up to government to consider.
Okay, sure. Chair, I'm happy to hand over for the moment unless you're happy for me to continue.
I've just got a couple of questions, and I'll throw it back to Mr Beach.
I have one.
Okay. I might just throw to you, Mr Wilde. Timber New South Wales made some comments in their conversation with us about the cross-tenure monitoring programme, and they were fairly negative about the fact that they hadn't seen any work being done, but I do note that you have since published some reports. I just wanted to see whether you wanted to respond to those criticisms. They sort of seemed to say that they weren't seeing much being done, the focus was mainly on state forests, and probably should be looking over the fence at national parks in terms of what's happening there as well. So I'd just invite some comments from you on those criticisms.
Thank you. I can understand why different stakeholders at times frustrated with the pace of work across government, and that's understandable, but those claims which were made were mistaken. The Forest Monitoring Improvement Programme has always been a cross-tenure programme with an additional targeted programme on the Coastal IFOA. So the bulk of the work has been looking at developing monitoring and research on national parks and state forests, with a little bit of work also done on crown land, and private native forestry, something we're looking to move into in the future. So most of the work has been cross-tenure. If you look at the work on, for instance, one of their baseline reports was on soil health, organic soil carbon. We looked there on the results of soil carbon across national parks, state forests, and also all across land. Unfortunately, it showed that organic carbon in soils has reduced quite considerably since the 1990s. If you look at the work we did on baselines on forest extent, that was national parks, state forests, private land, and in that, we found that the forest extent has increased 6%, largely attributed to private land and thickening around the edges. The state forest and national park forest extent has remained fairly stable. We've done the most exhaustive and comprehensive look over the past 35 years on flora and fauna across tenure, and that work hasn't yet been published. It's still undergoing technical review, but it is the most significant piece of work looking at flora and fauna outcomes over the past 35 years. Again, there are data gaps there, because unfortunately, in the past, there hasn't been consistent long-term monitoring. I could go on to a variety of programmes which we have been doing, so it's very much main focus, national parks, state forests, but when we've been running LiDAR or where there's available ground monitoring or previous plots, we've used those. And for instance, again, that flora and fauna, there was over some nearly 11,000 sites which were being looked at historically. So it has been us trying to mine with New South Wales EES, Forest Science in DPI, EPA, Local Land Services, Crown Lands, National Parks and Wildlife Service, and Aboriginal Affairs are all a part of this cross-tenure programme. So I could talk for hours about it.
Do you think their comments are based on the fact that, looking at some of their reports, you know, it doesn't seem like there was engagement, the industry was more at a Forest Corp level? Do you think some of that misunderstanding is because it hasn't, you know, the consultation or the engagement hasn't sort of trickled below the Forestry Corp level?
That would be fair. So we ran regional forums to first up set up the design of this programme, and in those regional forums, it'd be fair to say that the majority of participants of those regional forums were of community and environmental groups rather than industry. We did reach out to industry, but it'd be fair to say that the level of engagement with industry has not been what either party would want. And just recently, last week, I was speaking with the Chair of Timber New South Wales about how we can improve this. Likewise, I had conversations with Australian Forest Products Association, who are also, we've got better dialogue going there. So I'm confident in the future that the engagement will be better, and then the understanding will be there as well.
Okay, good. I just want to pick up on part of your answer there. You, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that you were going to start looking into private native forestry, is that correct?
In more in-depth, yes, that's the intent. So there has been monitoring, there has been LiDAR run and sort of a variety of programmes, but the majority of the focus has been on national parks and state forests to date. It is, I suppose the next steps there would be for the private native forestry codes to be finalised, and we would be encouraging government to have as part of that a strong monitoring and evaluation programme, which would be part of the existing Forest Monitoring Improvement Programme.
So I do note that, I think it's in your Koala report, which was one of those cross-tenure reports, you spoke about needing to understand the Koala response to private native forestry, and obviously, private native forestry and the, what we now know as the Koala Wars of 2019/20 was, I think private native forestry was a really contentious point in that Koala Sep. So have you been involved in advising the government on the Koala Sep 2.0?
No.
No. Okay. I'll throw it to Mr Beach.
The Chair's opening question sort of leads, I guess, to the obvious question, but was there anything else in the testimony or submissions that we've received to date that you think either agency needs to respond to? Because this is your chance to, your right of reply essentially.
The only other point was that also in that submission made by Timber New South Wales, they mistakenly characterised the funding arrangements and the inception of the Forest Monitoring Improvement Programme. It was a programme which industry was calling for, also green groups were calling for it. Department of Primary Industries did the initial work in developing the business case, not just the initial work, they did the business case, and then it was a decision of government that the Natural Resources Commission would independently oversee it to provide that whole-of-government cross-tenure perspective. And within that, DPI Forest Science have a significant and major contribution, which has been ongoing, but we're overseeing it. So there was a slight mischaracterisation of the role of the NRC in that body of work.
Can I just follow up on one thing? The cross-tenure monitoring, you've given a fairly good description of how it covered both state forests and national parks. Do you have a breakdown of how much was spent in terms of monitoring of state forests versus national parks? Are you able to accurately divide that up and give us a breakdown perhaps on notice?
On notice, if we could come back to you on that?
Yeah, thank you.
And did the EPA have, was there anything that has been raised, either in written submissions or at the hearings, that you would either like to respond to, rebut, or clarify?
Not that I'm aware, but I haven't seen all of the testimony that's been provided, particularly that of today, so at this stage, there's nothing.
Okay, thank you. Just another quick question to the NRC. In your opening statement, you were talking about the number of reviews, so forest fire diversity, and I think you said other forest-related reviews. I have a bit of an interest in weeds and the impact-
I'm shocked.
And the impact on our, both, on all of our forests, actually, the softwood as well as the hardwood forests. Have you done any work around the impact of weeds on our forests?
So the former Minister for Primary Industries engaged the Natural Resource Commission to do a statewide review into weeds in 2014.
Yep.
And we made, had a series of regional forums, engaged a variety of experts, and also commissioned an economic study into the impact of weeds. So in 2014, we found that the impact of weeds upon the New South Wales economy was $1.8 billion on average, which I know is an issue close to yourself. So in that, we also looked at, most of those costs were driven by agriculture, and we also looked at the costs borne by public land managers, and we looked into issues of how much there was expenditure on, you know, national parks and state forests at the time. So there is a significant cost on all public land managers, but the majority of the impost is on private landholders and farmers.
Yep. So with, so one of the issues, of course, is weeds and weed growth contributes to the fuel load for fires in our forests. When you did your forest fire diversity review, did you look at the impact of the scope, did the scope of that review include the capacity to look at whether or not, or how much weeds contribute to our fire fuel load?
No.
Okay.
No, so we have not done a review into the forest fire diversity, so I'm not certain if I'm understanding-
Oh, okay, sorry.
So we have provided funding through the programme to Energy Environment Science Division to upgrade their forest faesa mapping and the recovery mapping, so we've given support for that. And we've also done undertakings by, commissioned University of Wollongong to look into climate and bushfire risks across the coastal IFOA region, both national parks and state forests. But none of that work has looked into the specifics of the contribution or otherwise of weeds into forest fires.
Okay. I think I'll leave it there, thank you.
Any questions from the government, or I'll just throw back to Mr Field?
Thanks, Chair. Ms Mackey, I wouldn't mind turning our attention to private native forestry if we could. Have you got any idea how much timber came out of the private forestry, the PNF sector, in the last financial year?
We don't have that data.
When do you think, last time we spoke in estimates, and we've been talking about this for a while now, there seems to be no oversight really by government yet as to the areas being harvested or the volumes being taken. You indicated in estimates that you'd recently received a pile of information from LLS after some time chasing it, that you were digesting to try and get a handle on that. Any idea when you'll know the sorts of volumes that we're talking about here?
I might get Mr Fowler to talk to what data we do have that was provided in that provision of information.
Thank you. So the information that we've received relates to PNF approvals, private native forestry approvals that have been issued, and in force, if you like, some three-and-a-half thousand approvals. We've also obtained information, or limited information, about reporting from landholders under the provisions of those approvals, but that information is limited. We've taken that information alongside information we hold in relation to environmental risks associated with those particular properties, and also looked at property details and active PNF properties, so using satellite monitoring data over the last period of time to see where forestry activities occurred on those properties. We've now contacted all, in the order of three-and-a-half thousand, PNF approval holders, effectively ensuring that they understand the EPA's role as the regulator under those PNF approvals, and also drawing to their attention the obligations regarding reporting to government on PNF activity and volumes of timber being extracted under those approvals. In addition to that, we've looked at prioritising those sites based on those environmental factors and most recent logging activity, and they are now falling into our ongoing regulatory oversight, so our inspection programme, if you like.
How many people do you have working in this space?
We don't have a dedicated team that does forestry or public or private forestry. The way we do it is split across our operations team, so we can bring people in as required in different parts of the state, and then they're supported by Mr Fowler's area, who provide technical expertise, and we also have a policy area that provides advice and expertise, and of course, the legal team as well.
So it's fair to say, I think, that up until very recently, no one in government really was enforcing the reporting obligations on private native forestry approval holders.
Um-
Or since 2018, since the changeover.
I probably don't quite agree with the characterisation that up until, there is still significant reporting that is outstanding, that we certainly don't have visibility of, that, which is partly, it wasn't the only reason, but it's part of what prompted us to write out to around three-and-a-half thousand landholders who hold these approvals, according to the data, to, as David says, to remind them of their responsibilities in the space, and to try and be proactive around them understanding that the reporting is an important part as they undertake any of these types of activities.
Mr Wilde, the work that you do through the Forest Monitoring Programme and the LiDAR and other imagery that you might have, do you have any insight into how large the harvesting out of private native forestry sector is in New South Wales?
All I could go on is the historical figures from A-Bears, which is 2018, 2019. According to their figures, it's approximately just under 20% of the total native hardwood take, which is approximately about 180,000 cubic metres.
This is based on, sort of at the mill end though, right? That's the reporting that comes back from the mill end.
That's all I'm aware of, yes.
Okay. Ms Mackey, I'd like to talk about biomass, if we can. We're talking about the future of the timber industry. DPI were in here this morning, Regional New South Wales, and they see an opportunity here for biomass to improve the economics of the timber sector generally, whether it be on public or private land. There is this proposal in the Hunter Valley to change the Red Bank Power Station from being a coal-tailing-fired power station to a- power station to a biomass, um, power station with the majority of that biomass to be supplied through native forest biomaterials. Um, I know that you're well aware of, of that. A DPI official, Dr. Annette Cowie, provided evidence to the Land Environment Court proceedings, um, uh, providing expert testimony, um, about the proposal, and she quite explicitly counted some of the information provided by the EPA in their submission, uh, to the project. I just wanted to get some clarity around how the, um, eligible fuel, eligible waste fuels guidelines apply to native forest biomaterials, um, with regards to the burning of them for electricity, because it seems it's contentious.
Um, what I think is not contentious is that it's very clear that the EPA is the, um, legally responsible authority um, for determining these things. So, um, despite any credentials of, um, somebody who might be appearing in the Land and Environment Court, regardless of their day-to-day employment, that unless they work for the EPA, that is not their role. So, um, uh, I've already previously said that, uh, we don't agree that it was appropriate, um, for someone who's not from the EPA to purport to indicate where the EPA should sit on any particular issue. Um, in terms of the details, I'm probably going to hand over to Mr. Fowler, um, in regard to that.
So really, um, under the current provisions, um, obviously the legislation doesn't allow, uh, logging of native forests to produce wood for the purpose of electricity generation wholly and solely. And the, um, waste hierarchy effectively applies also in that, um, a higher order alternative use considered before use of that material in electricity generation. So, um, really it's around using material that is not fit for an alternate purpose or a higher order purpose.
Okay. So that's the key point. How do we determine the higher order process? Because it's pretty clear from both the evidence provided this morning, I think, and from, you know, Dr. Cowie's evidence, that the suggestion from the DPI is that using that material for electricity production, where it is offsetting other fossil fuels for electricity production is a higher order use. So who sets the higher order use provisions? Are they set down in regulations? Is it subjective? How do you weigh it up?
So that's very much set out in guidelines that we had developed, uh, that we develop, and we are currently, uh, in the process of updating those to give that clarity around that hierarchy and that higher order use.
Sure.
So those thresholds will be clear.
And we do expect those to be finalised in a matter of weeks.
Okay. But at the moment, would it be fair to say they're not quite clear?
I, I think what we're really conscious of in this space is with emerging technologies and the movement of, um, renewable energies into the space, um, it, it has certainly raised a number of questions, which is why we're going through the process of updating the guidelines.
Okay. Um, this is obviously a, there's concern that this could be a real pull factor for ongoing logging of forests, even though it's not the primary use. Um, it can create an economic incentive both on public land uh, and, um, and private land. Um, it, I guess the, um, we, we heard this morning that the Forestry Corporation is currently in negotiations with possible buyers of this material. So we've got DPI North Coast Residues Report forecasting the availability of, of certain amount, Forestry Corporation negotiating with contractors, EPA reviewing the regulatory framework and suggesting this might not be the higher order use. Uh, from our perspective, trying to understand the future of this industry, how it's going to operate, um, and considering up the implications of this for report, uh, how, how do we do that? Who holds sway here?
Uh, well, certainly when the guidelines are finalised, I think that will be helpful for the committee in, in terms of providing that clarity, um, given those emergence of, of different approaches. Um, we also, um, together with, um, the Department of Planning, um, meet with proponents of these types of proposals, um, uh, to work through in quite a lot of detail before anything, um, is submitted, um, around the technology being proposed, um, and consider a range of issues such as, um, you know, whether or not the feedstock, um, available in the locality meets the current guidelines, um, and whether or not it will meet the guidelines into the future. And I think with that, um, particular proposal in Red Bank, um, we have asked for additional information, um, on more than one occasion to try and ascertain, um, where the intention is in terms of feed spot, feedstock within the local vicinity, um, where that would be coming from, um, not just in, you know, once it got started, but certainly in the out years.
Um, reporting has been something that we've raised, um, in the discussion here today. Um, we've had discussions before about reporting on biomass provided to the currently exempt electricity generators on the north coast. And will those regulations have, when they're finalised, have clear reporting requirements so that the community and government agencies can understand where the, the feedstock is actually coming from for these projects?
We've certainly learned, uh, heard loud and clear that people want, um, greater transparency around, um, where the product is coming from. Um, uh, we are certainly looking at that as one of the issues as we update the guidelines. Um, and as you're aware, we, um, did seek to release and be as transparent as possible, um, around, um, that operator in the far north of the state. Um, however, NCAT determined that we were unable to release, um, all of the information that we sought to.
Unable or weren't required to? It's, you're, you're not restricted from providing that information though, under the contracts or agreements with the user?
Um, it, I, I could get you the detail on notice, um, but the decision of, um, was around, um, us not being able to release it on the grounds of, um, commercially, being commercially in confidence.
But you, you were collecting it. So the EPA knows where it's coming from, correct?
We sought it from that particular operator.
They, they possibly weren't complying with their conditions at the time, might be the other way to put that. Am I probably wrong in saying?
There were a range of, we have done a, a complete audit of that particular operator, um, around, you know, all aspects of their operation. Um, and we worked through with them, um, areas of non-compliance, um, to get them into the compliance space.
Okay. Two more if I could quickly, Chair. Um, sorry, uh, Miss Mackey, I meant to ask before, what's the status of those 10 prosecutions at the moment?
So I believe, I can't find it. Um, I, I'm, I'm aware on the Wild, Cattle Creek ones, I believe that Forestry Corp has pleaded guilty. Um, and so we are scheduled, um, for a hearing, I believe, I thought it was, um, imminent.
Right.
Um, very early December. On the other two, I'd have to get you an update.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Wild, earlier you, um, made mention of, um, gains in, I think, uh, you were talking about gains in, in, in forest cover or forest extent, and you were indicating that on private land, there'd been gains observed, six or eight percent, I think you.
Since 1990?
Since 1990. Um, that runs a bit counter to the, um, the slats, from, from my understanding of it, runs counter to the slats information that suggested quite a substantial, um, loss of woody vegetation. Can, can you just explain how those two data sets might, um, interact?
Certainly. Uh, what I was referring to is in the, uh, RFA, the Regional Forest Agreement Regions, so it excludes the Western Division.
Okay, righto.
So that's the short answer.
Yes, alright, that's probably the entire answer, um, to a degree. What's the, um, resolution here though? Because there, you know, there's a forest, there's a forest, there's a forest, right? If it's, you know, if the NCAS, I think it's 20% indicates a forest, what sort of resolution do you go down to to be able to determine the, the density and the, you know, what the biodiversity values o, of that? So what do you mean by a 6% increase in extent?
I'll take that on notice.
Okay, righto. But this is, this is aerial, um, data, yeah, you know, LiDAR.
Yes.
Going over the top, making a judgement about the forest has expanded to a degree. So there's a, but there will be a resolution question here about the value of that in terms of biodiversity and.
Yes, yes, yep. Uh, I'll be able to answer that question, uh, very easily once, uh, I look into the technical papers. Uh, in essence, what was driving it was a thickening around the edges.
Yeah, okay, righto. Um, that would pick up changes relating to private native forestry operations, I assume.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Chair.
No worries. Uh, just one final question from me, uh, to you, Mr. Wild and Professor White. Um, the mapping of old growth and rainforests in both private, uh, land and public land, particularly state forests, has been described as pretty poor. Would you agree with that, that sentiment? And if so, wh, where can the improvements be made?
Okay. Uh, so the Natural Resource Commission has previously been engaged to undertake a, a review of the mapping of old growth and rainforest. Uh, and that programme has now been suspended. When we did the review, uh, we looked at the mapping of candidate old growth uh, on, and we chose 13 sites, which was in consultation with both Forest Corp and the EPA on public land. Uh, of those sites, there was, um, from memory, six of those 13 sites, uh, showed that there were, um, there was no old growth actually on those sites. Uh, and we provided advice to government at the time uh, to recommend a review of the mapping of old growth and rainforest, um, because on our sample overall was around about three quarters, uh, there was inaccuracies of old growth, and approximately, again from memory, it was around about the 30-odd to 40-odd percent of inaccuracies in, uh, rainforest mapping. Uh, that work, we recommended through an expert panel, a series of safeguards to ensure that, uh, the environmental protections and values of those forests would still be identified. So one thing is to tell, is it old growth or not? Is it a rainforest or not? But then does it have other significant environmental values which need to be protected? Uh, so there was a multi-criteria analysis and process that we recommended to government, but the short story is, uh, then has government decided to suspend that programme, uh, because we couldn't continue our terms of reference within the terms of reference in the funding envelope, uh, post the fires, because it required analysis of canopy uh, to, before you went and did ground truthing. And post fires with the high extent of canopy scorch, we couldn't do that without a significant amount of, um, taxpayer investment on ground to do it. So the first pass was, uh, canopy, and that was, that was going to be cost prohibitive. We provided that advice to government and government, uh, decided to suspend that programme.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I've just got a quick question, um, for Mr. Wild. Um, given last summer was quite wet and this one pretty much will be, uh, one of the wettest ones on record for quite a while, what sort of bush recovery rates have we seen since, um, since the 1925s? You got some data on that?
Uh, I, I don't have data at hand. Uh, the Energy Environment Science Unit, um, do have, uh, a, a significant piece of work which we have commissioned, uh, which is looking at, um, recovery index, and that was last run, uh, 12 months ago. It's due to be run again in, in January, and that should show, um, what I would expect. What we've all seen out there is significant recovery, uh, and that we should be providing significant good news, um, to, to industry and to the ecosystems and everyone who has a concern about our forests. So that work should be rerun, uh, in the summer, which is the same time as it was run previously, and I would imagine it would show a significant improvement.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more, Chair?
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome.
I think we're here till quarter to, aren't we? Um, just in terms of potential recommendations for this, um, inquiry, the, the Forest Monitoring Programme is relatively new, but it sounds like it's providing very useful information to guide uh, policymakers and understanding. What's its status and funding, um, security like?
Uh, the Forest Monitoring Improvement Programme was a four-year terms of reference from the Premier, then Premier, which, uh, expires in this end of this financial year.
Right.
So the, the, in addition, um, the EPA also funded, um, the NRC, uh, for, over a five-year programme for the monitoring on the coastal IFA. And likewise, Forest Corp contributes money, um, as part of their own monitoring of their activities on that. So that goes for another year. Uh, but in relation to the cross-tenure work, uh, on water, soil, carbon, jobs, flora, fauna, uh, all those large questions, including in private native forestry, uh, there is no ongoing funding for that work that the Commission currently has.
So, um, I assume you're making a budget submission, uh, for this year then to get some, uh, security of, of funding there, but you've had no commitments at this stage. So as far as you understand, that funding stops, uh, in the middle of next year?
That's correct. Um, and we are, it, it, going through a process at the moment to put forward a business case for it to be continued, uh, because uh, frankly, government, industry and community needs to have timely, reliable data to inform decisions on some of these critical issues. And the value of any, uh, research and monitoring is its longevity. So we've initiated work on baselines, initiated great work with collaboration across government and university, but the real value will lie in this being, uh, a long-term programme.
So what was the year-on-year budget for the last four years? What was the average annual budget?
Uh, there was, uh, $9.2 million, uh, in combining both, uh, so 7.2 million plus the EPA's 2 million over the four years.
Over the four years.
So 7.2 over four years.
Okay, over four years. And is that sufficient in your view to be able to continue this work? Or do the fires change the sort of the need ongoing and?
The conversation really happened post fires in terms of, um, what funding might exist in the space, um, and considering the work that was required from EES Science as well, um, because I was certainly part of those conversations, um, post the fires.
So there is a significant need for additional funding. Uh, we've, so far, we have done a terrific job across, when I say we, this is across universities, agencies, not just the NRC in any way, to basically mine historical data and then to initiate new programmes using LiDAR and field-based plots. But that needs to require ongoing investment, and to the extent at the moment, it doesn't, uh, wouldn't address any of your concerns about private native forestry, for instance. Um, so if we're going to actually tell what difference and what is, um, uh, rule sets in the private native forestry or the coastal IFA, you need to have ongoing data and monitoring. Uh, and what we've got currently under the programme was sufficient, if you like, seed funding to do the design, um, to mine the historical data and to initiate first runs on some monitoring, but it's not sufficient, um, to actually address the significant needs both on public and private land moving to the future.
So just on that, I, I suspect there's going to be an increasing conversation around, um, carbon in our forests, the value of that, the potential of it, both in the trees and in the soils. And I know your recent report that identified the loss of soil carbon. Does your, um, monitoring improvement project go into carbon at all? Is it something you're looking at?
Yes, yes. So we have, um, two projects which look into carbon, one on soil carbon, uh, and another one on carbon stored in, in forests. Uh, and, um, the soil one is actually publicly released. The other one is going through, um, further technical review.
But these are on, ongoing as part of improvement? Okay.
Yep. Well, within this.
Existing funding.
Within existing funding.
Okay, no worries.
Uh, and obviously, if you are a private native forestry operator, then, uh, the more diversity you have for your income and for being a great steward of your land, you would be very, very interested in emerging carbon markets, and that there should be, um, advocacy uh, in relation to addressing issues of additionality, um, for those private native forests who are, foresters who are good stewards of their land. And our data should, um, hopefully inform some of those decisions.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. That's it. Um, that concludes a little bit early. So thank you very, very much for your time. You've taken some questions on notice. So the committee secretary will be in touch, uh, with the timeline to get them back to us. Um, but once again, thank you for your time and your candour, and safe travels wherever you're going, and happy festive season.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.